Counselor Wilson. This is on the ears.
Who's that?
It's Cynthia.
Okay. Is that his number?
No, here's a six and another five and seven.
Mr. Barry, are we ready to start recording?
Yeah, just before you start your call at order, I have Mr. Thompson here from IT. He will give detailed instructions on how to join in on our virtual meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Barry. A bit of technical housekeeping. This meeting is being recorded. I repeat, this meeting is being recorded. For those who have joined the meeting using the Microsoft Teams application, we ask you to mute yourself by pressing the microphone icon. This will help reduce feedback and background noise. At the appropriate time, and if you would like to make a comment, please click the hand icon to be recognized. Once you are recognized, please click the microphone icon to speak. At the conclusion of your comment, please click the hand icon to lower the hand and click the microphone icon to mute yourself. Those of you who have dialed into the meeting, please press star six to mute yourselves. When it is appropriate time to make comments, please unmute yourself by pressing star six. When you have concluded your statement, press star six to mute yourself once again. We ask that everyone be cordial and respectful of time. Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes. This meeting is being called to order. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, pursuant to public laws nineteen seventy-five, chapter two thirty-one. This agenda is complete to the extent known and was sent to the Trenton Times and the Trentonian newspapers, posted on the first floor bulletin board in City Hall, and filed in the city clerk's office, also posted on the Trenton City's website. Formal action will be taken. Roll call, Mr. Barry.
Mr. Blakely?
Present.
Ms. Caldwell-Wilson?
Present.
Mr. Harrison?
Present.
Michelle?
Present.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Present.
Mrs. Vaughn? Ms. Vaughn? Counsel President McBride?
Present.
Adam Cruz?
Present.
Colin Cherry?
Present.
Yoshi Minelli? Yoshi Minelli? John Morelli?
Sally Samuel from the Office of the Law Department on behalf of John Morelli.
Sally. Shelly A. Corley?
I apologize.
I'm sorry.
That was not appearing to the Law Department.
Say that again, sorry.
Sally Samuel on behalf of the Law Department.
Yes. Sheila? Sheila A. Corley?
Present.
Derek Sawyer?
Present.
Benjamin Delisle?
Present.
Shakira Abdul Ali?
Present.
Wally Ontary?
Present.
Maria Richardson?
Present.
David Smith?
Present.
Jeanette Schonauer?
Present.
Okay, we're ready for the docket review. The minutes for approval will be April sixteenth, for the April sixteenth, twenty twenty, regular session, and also May fifth, twenty twenty conference. Communications and petitions have been accepted by the clerk's office. Reports, city clerk's office submitting for approval, the revenue report for the month of May, twenty twenty, of funds collected by the office staff totaling twenty-one thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars and forty-five cents.
Uh, Mr. Barry, I would like to, uh, talk about the communications and petitions.
Okay.
The civil action summons Q A and the civil action summons Q B. Both these, uh, summons were filed by attorneys representing people from Art All Night, Trenton Festival artworks, Trenton and Court. So, my question about both these, uh, communications and petitions, these two petitions that were filed, I wanted to know why the city of Trenton is liable for anything that occurred at the Arts All Night. And then this question is for, um, Mrs. Samuel, and, um, if Mr. Colosi could look into this before Tuesday, because I want to know about the insurance that the, that, uh, the venue had purchased, because I'm not clear on why the city has to be responsible when that particular venue was supposed to have, um, insurance. And so I want to find that out. And I also want to know, like, when other venues operate in our city, if we are responsible for anything that occur with other venues that have, uh, um, you know, ceremonies, uh, outings, anything that is, um, done in the city where the actual person has to get insurance to cover their event, I would like to know how many events are we responsible for in the city of Trenton? And I would also like to get the number, the dollar amount that we pay for security for this particular event based on all the other events that occur in the city, and if we, um, support other events in the city with security. I need to know the dollar amount that we spent on security for Arts All Night, and I also need to know why we are responsible for any fraction of a lawsuit.
We will certainly review it and get back to you, madam. Vice President, uh, Madam President, I'm sorry.
Miss, Mrs. Samuel?
Samuel.
Ms. Samuel?
Madam President? Uh, I'm, I'm sorry, I was muted, Madam President?
Yes.
Okay. As I was saying, as I was stating, I was saying that, uh, we would have to also research and get back to you. Unfortunately, I do not have the answers to provide to you tonight.
Okay. Hopefully, we can get them by tomorrow before Thursday's meeting. Thank you. I thank both of you, Mr. Colosi and Ms. Samuel.
Yeah, not a problem.
Thank you.
Make it to, Mr. Barry.
Thank you. Moving on to ordinances, there are, for second reading and public hearing, there are none. So we'll move right into resolutions. First one, twenty dash two six two from the city clerk's office. Resolution authorizing a contract to Twenty Second Century Technologies Incorporated, the New Jersey State Contract Number M dash two zero zero one one eight dash G N S V two dash zero zero three four eight, in the amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars. This, uh, resolution was brought up by Mrs. McBride.
That's not the one. That's the one brought up by the city clerk's office.
Excuse me. That's good. This is brought, this is brought up by my office, absolutely. Any questions? Concerns? Okay, twenty dash two six three, this is brought up by Ms. McBride. A resolution providing for a professional ass- assessment. Excuse me?
I don't know what somebody spoke.
Okay. A resolution providing for a professional assessment of the Trenton Police Department. Twenty dash two six four, also brought up by Mrs. McBride. A resolution committing for the mayor and city council of the city of Trenton to pledge to reform police use of force policies. It's actually police use of force policies. Twenty dash two six five, coming from Department Administration. Uh, Adam Cruz, Director, Resolution Awarding Contract to Riggins, Inc., awarded through the state contract, Number T dash zero zero seven seven one seven dash F zero zero D dash zero zero three nine two, in the amount not to exceed five hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. Twenty dash two six six. Resolution authorizing a contract to W.B. Mason Company Incorporated, awarded through the state contract, T dash zero zero five two eight 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 three nine, from May twenty-second, twenty twenty, through May sixth, twenty twenty-one, in the amount not to exceed two hundred and sixty-three dollars and two hundred and fif- two hundred and six-
Madam President?
Thousand.
Madam President?
Yes, go right ahead.
Yeah, um, I have a question for Mr. Cruz. I asked, uh, um, docket review, why this contract? There's interference on this line.
I, uh, yes, uh, Madam Vice President, what we did is that we went back and we, um, uh, we fixed the starting date. So if you look at the, if you look at the, what, there should be a new, uh, resolution, um, in, in your packet, showing that, uh, it begins on, uh, May, May seventh, twenty twenty to May sixth, twenty twenty-one. I believe the O one was making the, um, was making the starting date May twenty, if I'm not mistaken.
My package has the May twenty-second.
Okay, yeah, so there, there should be a new, a, a new resolution, uh, with the May seventh, uh, on it.
Mr. Harris, uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Barry, do you have that new one, or?
Stand by, just a minute, please. Yeah. You know where it's coming from. At this moment, I do not have that. I do not have that, that change.
Mr. Cruz, could you make sure you get that to Mr. Barry by tomorrow so Lordus can make a copy of your correct one? Hello?
Mr. Cruz?
I, I keep getting muted for some reason. Um, yes, uh, Madam Vice President, I will, um, we will make sure that, uh, Mr. Barry, um, does have a copy of the resolution tomorrow morning.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Two zero dash two six seven, Resolution exercising the option to extend the contract to Claims Resolution Corporation, a period of one year in the amount not to exceed a flat annual fee of a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, dash C two zero one nine dash zero five.
Mr., um, Mr. Barry, there's a clerical error in corporation.
Yes. I, I, okay. I'll make note of that, but I, I understood what it was. Twenty dash two six eight, Resolution awarding a contract to the S S H I International Corporation, awarded through the New Jersey State Contract Number M dash zero 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 three eight nine eight five one, in the amount not to exceed thirty-seven thousand five hundred and twenty-four dollars.
Uh, Counsel President?
Yes.
It's, uh, Councilwoman Robin Vaughn. I'm sorry, apologies, but I joined late. Um, but I did want the, uh, clerk to, um, roll call the, uh, two resolutions that you were so thoughtful to put forward considering the climate in our city, our state, and our country, and globally. Um, I want to roll call twenty-two sixty-three and twenty-two sixty-four.
Okay, I see them all.
Can you roll call that, Mr. Barry?
Yes, ma'am, I will.
Thank you.
Yes. Continue, Madam President?
Yes.
Okay, two zero dash two six nine, Resolution Designating an Equal Opportunity Compliance Officer, that's E E O C, pursuant to New Jersey A dot C seventeen, semicolon, twenty-seven dash three point two, to serve as a liaison between the city of Trenton and the New Jersey State Division of Contract Compliance and Equal Employment Opportunity in the public contracts.
Uh, it's Robin Vaughn, again. Can we roll call that one as well? And, um, can I ask a question at this juncture?
Yes, you can.
Um, regarding this resolution, uh, is the BA Cruz available?
Uh, yes, I am available.
Yes, good afternoon, sir. Uh, can you just kind of give us a overview of how this particular role or office will work? And will it be autonomous? Uh, what, um, department it will roll up into and report to? And how it's going to be resourced?
Uh, yes, so one of the recommendations that was made, uh, when, uh, when, when the, the city went and hired uh, new attorneys was that we had someone, uh, specifically, um, to handle, uh, you know, sit, uh, I would probably say situations such as, such as these. Uh, Ms. Jacqueline Abdul Razak is actually an attorney that was just hired by the, by the Law Department, and so she reports to, uh, to the Corporation Council. Uh, she, it will be the person responsible to, um, to be the point person with the, um, uh, with the Labor Department when it comes to, um, uh, contract compliance and, and any other issues that may, um, uh, that may come up, uh, when contracts are awarded by the city.
Yeah, so right now, the city of Trenton does not have an office of contract compliance. And how is it that an office of, uh, contract compliance work in any city or any municipality or any government?
Um, contract compliance regarding, uh, what, uh, Councilwoman?
What is the purpose of contract compliance?
So the, so, uh, the, the PACO is, is, is to, uh, to be the person, the liaison between the city and the, and the, um, the Labor Department when it comes to equal employment, uh, compliance. So, um, so Ms. Jacqueline will be that liaison. Um, when it comes to city compliance, uh, the city, I am not sure if prior to my arrival or maybe during the layoffs back in two thousand and nine and two thousand and ten, uh, that was, um, uh, you know, that was taken out of commission, I, I'm not sure. Um, but actually, by, uh, hiring of Ms. Jacqueline is actually a step in the right direction. Uh, she will be the person overseeing, uh, dysfunction.
Yeah, so, uh, I just want to be sure, because, uh, we did, as you alluded to, uh, last year, that we wanted, the council wanted to have an affirmative action attorney, uh, E E O A A attorney, but also, it is separate, I believe, that if, uh, Mr. Colosi or Mr. Cohen or Ms. Morelli is on the line, uh, I believe the roles of a E E O A A attorney versus a professional that, um, heads up and manages the Office of Contract Compliance Office are two separate entities and probably should serve autonomously, correct?
Well, actually, the Office of, uh, it, in, in, in other municipalities, and I'll speak from experience, uh, from the, uh, from my time working in the city of Newark, uh, the compliance officers are actually reported to the mayor's office. So, uh, in this instance, uh, Ms. Jacqueline Abdul Razak will be reporting to, uh, to the Corporation Council. So, um, there, there's no law that says what office they need to be reporting to.
Um, well, uh, well, I, I'm gonna just mention, thank you, Mr. Cruz. I'm just gonna mention my expectation of when this was first put forward by, uh, by counsel, I mean, by counsel. And I believe back in two thousand and ten, when the individual who led the office for the city of Trenton was terminated, she didn't, that individual did not report into the Law Department. So, I don't quite understand why this function is going to report into the Law Department. Um, and if so, is there a plan down the road in the very short term to have an office dedicated to this role in ensuring that all the contracts that we engage and sign onto in the city of Trenton are compliant with, uh, uh, equal opportunity employment and making sure these contractors are hiring minorities, are hiring women, are hiring veterans, are hiring the disabled, et cetera?
Thanks, Ms. Jacqueline.
And how is it that, I'm sure that, uh, the attorney that you're hiring is very competent in this space, but who's gonna go out into the field and monitor, and monitor these contracts to make sure they're compliant?
If you need, I can answer that question.
Uh, the BA, can BA Cruz answer that question, please? Who, how are we gonna monitor and to assure, who's gonna go out into the field and monitor the contracts to assure that these contracts are compliant with the law?
Uh, Ms. Abdul, you wanted to say something?
Excuse me, can Ms. Abar, can you, uh, mute yourself? Because we're getting feedback from you.
She's gonna say something.
Okay.
As the, as the E E O C compliance officer and the liaison of the state, it would be my duty to make sure that these contracts are in line and that they're, and that the, and that the businesses are conforming and that they're following the law and that they're hiring minorities, women, the handicapped, um, anyone who qualifies under there. Um, again, it's not, it's not necessarily a difficult task. I mean, it's part of the task and it's part of the job to ensure that the contracts are awarded to people who are following the law.
Well, you know, I, I would, uh, you know, I, I did, I did, um, I did a little research and, uh, earlier on, when we were going down this path before you came on board, thank you for that. Um, it's, you know, I, I've met and, and Mr. Cruz, I did speak to the Director of Contract Compliance in Newark, uh, Director, um, David Mohammed, and, you know, he produced a model and provided, provided us with some documentation as to how the Office of Contract Compliance runs in Newark and how they helped, uh, Jersey City put in their Office of Contract Compliance. And I was just wondering, will you all, uh, collaborate or reach out to your counterparts in the other municipalities who have experience in this space? And get some pointers from them as to how, uh, an office of compliance should be built out? Because I would expect that that's what the city of Trenton would be moving toward. Um, because I can't see a lawyer that's sitting in the Law Department performing this task. But, you know, that's just my take on it. And, and I haven't seen any other municipality that really, uh, uh, has deployed such a, a person in the Law Department.
Um, if I can just, um, say that, um, it is definitely my intention to reach out to other, um, to other similarly situated, um, professionals who, who perform this task. And as an attorney, most of the people that I know that do this thing are attorneys. I mean, there are laws and regulations that we have to follow, and most attorneys are the ones who are making sure that these regulations are in compliance with the government. I mean, not to say that it's not a job that attorneys don't do, however, it is a position where attorneys are called to task to do this.
Yeah, I'm, I'm asking, are you gonna be the monitors that go out into the field and, uh, and audit these, uh, contractors to ensure that they're compliant?
Yes, I mean, I mean.
Uh, Director Mohammed in Newark, he has like four monitors.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman Vaughn, can you, Councilwoman Vaughn, could you please give her the opportunity to finish her sentence?
Well, I didn't finish my sentence, and can you please not interrupt my sentence as well? So my question was, again, what, Council President, I'm not finished.
Did you cut her off in the middle of the sentence? That's why I was saying, did you get the answer?
I know, but she, if I cut her off, she could tell me that, right?
Well, yeah, you're running.
I'm, I'm telling you.
Well, 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 again, I know that you can do that on occasion, but anyway, can you please account?
Respect the jet technology?
If we, if we have, oh, I'm sorry.
You have, uh, a feedback.
Yes, I was gonna.
I tried to mute you, but you're giving.
Oh, am I gonna mute myself?
Yeah, once you finish talking, so that we can, it's some feedback.
I apologize, I'm, bear with, I have to get used to this. But what I wanted to say is, you know, um, if we feel the need that we need, you know, or that I need another person to help me with monitoring them, I have an assistant who is readily handled, we have a well-staffed Law Department. Um, Mr. Morelli, I'm sure if I need other staff, he will provide them. So, you know, our job is to serve the citizens of Trenton to the best of our abilities to make sure that the citizens of Trenton all have jobs and that, again, companies that want to do business with Trenton are hiring and employing people and treating them with the utmost respect. And that's what we'll be doing.
Can we roll call this, please, Mr. Barry?
Yes, twenty, um, twenty-two six.
Dash two six nine.
Nine, yes. Moving on to twenty dash two seventy-three, Resolution. Moving on to twenty dash two seventy-three, resolution authorizing to amend the amount and name of Resolution twenty dash one seventy-seven. Twenty dash two-five-nine, resolution authorizing to amend the type-one school district tax amount on Resolution twenty dash two fifty-nine. If there's any questions, uh, Director Cruz.
Where, where, where are you? Where are you? Mr. Uh, Berry, where, where are you?
I just left twenty dash two sixty-nine. And I read twenty dash two seventy-three. I'm, I'm still in the administration. And, and now I'm at twenty-two-five-nine.
I don't have that resolution. It was not a part of my package. It was not a part of my package.
Twenty dash two seventy-three?
Twenty dash two fifty-nine.
Okay.
Uh, yes, so, uh, 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 Mr. Berry?
Yes.
I, I think this is the resolution that was actually not, uh, uh, that did not, for some reason, did not make it to this docket. Um, uh, Madam President, this, uh, resolution was actually, uh, reviewed, uh, a docket reviewed, uh, where, uh, uh, Madam, uh, Vice President and I had a series of, 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 of conversations regarding this resolution on Thursday. Um, it is actually a resolution that was, um, the Resolution twenty dash two fifty-nine was actually, um, adopted by council at the last council meeting. Uh, with, uh, it was part of the, uh, the budget amendment. And so when, uh, when the, the actual resolution, the, the, the one-sheet resolution was written, the person who was preparing the resolution inadvertently, uh, was looking at last year's, um, uh, but, uh, 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 school board budget amount last year's, uh, which reflected a twenty-three million, three hundred and thirteen thousand, three hundred and ninety-seven dollars, when in reality it should have been twenty-two million, nine hundred and eighty-three thousand, uh, one dollar and thirty-two cents. Um, the good news is, is that the actual, uh, legal package that was distributed to council had the right figures, uh, that include the twenty-two point, uh, the twenty-two point nine million and not the twenty-three point three million. So, um, so this resolution is actually just to amend, uh, the face of that resolution because the package, as I mentioned, the legal package was actually, uh, uh, with the right numbers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Madam President?
Did, yes, go right ahead, Councilman Rodriguez.
Hey, Mr. Cruz, was that the amount requested by the school district?
He, yes, the, the amount. Yes, the, the amount, that, that is correct. The amount that was due to the school board, to the school district is twenty-two million, nine hundred and eighty-three thousand, one dollar and thirty-two cents.
And that's what, uh, was in their budget because we approved their budget.
That, yeah. So, yeah, so the number that you approve is actually the number that we, that we, uh, included in, in our budget.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The following resolutions are from the Department of Law, Mr. John Morelli. Twenty dash two seventy, resolution authorizing the settlement of a Superior Court complaint in the matter of Lino A. Rosario versus the city of Trenton, Peter Sepikowski, Mercer Bearing Docking Number M E R L dash zero-nine-one-eight dash two-zero.
Mr.?
Madam President, I'd like to add a comment on this.
Yes, go right ahead, uh, uh, Councilman.
I'll ask my, uh, fellow councilpeople to, to approve this settlement. Uh, I don't know if you, uh, if you read the whole case, the whole situation, or what happened to this police officer, Mr. Rosario. But that was, he was used as a scapegoat, I'm gonna say that publicly, uh, by our old, you know, system in the police department. He was the one that paid some comments that our ex-director said on, uh, uh, an announcement, uh, Trenton, a, a couple of years ago. And, uh, his suspension from the police department and all this case comes out of that. I believe it was very unjustified. Uh, Mr. Rosario, his family had gone through hell with this case. Mr. Rosario had nothing in his record in, 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 in eighteen years of service to the police department. You know, I, uh, the settlement is for just twenty thousand dollars. Plus, he's gonna get his job back, which he, he should have not, they should not have fired him. He should not have lost his job at all, you know, because that wasn't his fault that his, uh, camera picked that conversation, you know? And that, that came out in the papers, that was a big scene in our communities. You know, that was a, you know, uh, calling his own names on our youth in the, uh, community. And that's where this case is coming from. He was used as a scapegoat. So I believe that we should, uh, what we should keep this in the consent agenda and award this officer his, his money and his job back because he deserves it.
So for this particular resolution, um, the, uh, I had gotten several calls from, uh, my colleagues to move forward on a vote this evening for this resolution. And so I would ask, um, my, uh, my colleagues if, uh, if they would like to make a motion to move forward with the vote for this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
So we got Councilman Michelle moved it, Mr. Rodriguez seconded it.
I have a question.
I seconded, didn't I? I thought I did.
Yes.
President McBride?
Yes, go right ahead, uh, Councilman Blakely.
Thank you. Uh, I have no problem voting for this, but is it proper, uh, to, uh, vote on this, uh, during, uh, this time? Uh, why, uh, why can't we just vote on Thursday? This is not an actual, um, voting session. And I don't recall us ever voting, um, at an agenda meeting.
You can, it, it, the, when I read off the statement, it says formal action will be taken and you can take formal action. And so because the, um, um, several, uh, of the, um, of our, uh, of our council members wanted to move this vote this evening. And, um, so that's why I asked them to put a motion forward. But under the, um, under the statement, it says that you can take a formal action.
Okay, can we have a, uh, opinion from the law department? If, a- as it relates to the properness of voting on this matter? Like I said, I, I don't necessarily have an issue. You can?
Hi, good, um, good evening, all. Um, I had an opportunity to speak with Mr. Morelli. And apparently, um, there was a consent order here to settle this matter. Um, basically, the settlement of this matter, um, when Mr. Morelli was presented with the facts of this matter, um, he believed that the gentleman should not have been, um, fired from his job over a medical condition. And, um, it appears that this settlement is proper and fair um, in light of, you know, you know, or considering that, you know, they can go forward and they could, you know, possibly, you know, look for more litigation, look for more money. Um, again, um, it's my understanding that there was a consent order and that, um, you know, and that we want to move forward and take care of this.
Uh, Madam President, Edward Klose, can you hear me? Hello?
Council President? Wait, wait a minute, someone else was trying to speak and I couldn't hear him because it was muffled out. Was that Mr. Klose?
Yes, Edward Klose, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, you can take a general poll, a sense of where the council is on this issue, but the actual vote to approve the settlement will still have to be done Thursday night at the public meeting. You can go around to make sure everybody's position is where it is on this. But the actual vote that will be tabulated by the clerk will have to be done, uh, Thursday night in the open session as well.
Right, that's what I thought. Okay, thank you, Mr. Uh, Mr. Klose.
Thank you.
Two-zero dash two-seven-one, resolution rejecting proposals received.
No, 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 we have to rescind, um, they have to rescind the motions and the second.
I will stand by it, my second.
Ca- Councilman Michelle?
Yes, I rescinded.
Rescinded. Madam President?
Yes.
Okay. Two-zero dash two-seven-one, resolution rejecting proposed, rejected, received for legal services, Assistant Municipal Prosecutors for the City of Trenton, Department of Law, RFP two, twenty-twenty dash seventeen. Twenty dash two-seven-two is coming from the Police Department, Sheila A. Colley, Director. Resolution authorizing the city of Trenton, Trenton Police Department and Mercer County to participate in the Defense Logistics Agency Law Enforcement Support Office, ten thirty-three program to enable the Trenton Police Department to request and acquire excess Department of Defense equipment.
Mr. Clerk? Uh, Mr. Clerk?
Yes.
Hi, this is, uh, this is Adam Cruz, uh, Business Administrator. Uh, the, um, I was asked by, um, 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 I guess by, the administration is gonna pull this, I mean, uh, this resolution tonight. We're pulling it.
Okay.
It needs to be reviewed and revised.
Department of Health and Human Services, Shakira Abdul Ali. The following brought to twenty dash two-seventy-four, resolution authorizing a contract to the Twenty-Second Century Technologies Incorporated through New Jersey State Contract, number M dash two-zero-zero-one-one-eight G N S V two dash zero-zero-three-four-eight in an amount not to exceed thirty-six thousand dollars. Twenty dash two-seven-five, resolution authorizing the use of competitive contracting in lieu of public bidding for public health support services.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
This is Shakira Abdul Ali. I, um, don't know what happened with the original version of twenty-two-seven-five that we sent forward. Uh, but the, the language that is in this resolution is not the language that we are asking for. It is not the language, it is not the, the document that we want to get approved by council. So is it, um, I don't know if it's proper to ask that it be replaced with the correct document or, um, if we, I hope we don't have to pull it, but.
You would, you would have to pull it. Because this is before us, twenty dash two-seven-five.
This is not the right, uh, this is not the right document at all.
It would have to be, it would have to be pulled by, by your administration, by you.
All right, well.
Two-zero, two-seven-five pulled.
Yes.
Department of Housing and Economic Development, Benjamin Delisle, Director. Twenty dash two-seventy-six, resolution awarding a contract through a fair and open process in accordance with NJSA one-nine semicolon four-four A dash two-zero-four E T S E Q T O Macabre Environment Services LLC in an amount not to exceed forty-three thousand, eight hundred dollars, RFP twenty-twenty dash eleven. Twenty dash two-seven-seven, a resolution authorizing the application for acceptance of an environmental defense fund, Climate Corpse Fellow. Twenty dash two-seven-eight, resolution authorizing payment for a contract with Carroll Demolition LLC, Four Young Road, Hamilton, New Jersey, awarded on the emergency basis for demolition services at various locations in the city of Trenton.
Robin Vaughn?
Question that.
It's Robin Vaughn, okay, go ahead.
No, go ahead, Councilwoman Vaughn and then Councilman Rodriguez.
Yeah, um, I just wanted to roll call two, twenty-two-seven-seven and twenty-two-seventy-eight. And Councilman Rodriguez, he can go forward.
Uh, he, he has, in twenty dash seven, uh, two-seventy-eight, uh, it says emergency, on emergency basis. I read the, uh, the locations of the, the houses on Brunswick Avenue, Lamberton. Uh, there was a few locations. They all came down, one of them, a wall fell down, that was an emergency. The wall fell down, but what made all these properties an emergency? You know, that's what I, that's my question.
Councilman, this is Benjamin Delisle. The, these were emergencies, they were declared imminent hazards by the subcode official. Um, a couple of them were, uh, had fire damage and were ta- were taken down on an emergency basis. And the other ones, I think, were in such a state that they were falling apart and falling into the street. Um, that's my, that's my understanding why they were done in this manner.
But, but we just approved, recently, we approved this contract for the eleven, some million dollars for demolitions and stuff, you know, could and that had been done with this program.
So the, these, um, we will look to apply them where we can. This is for the contract, right? Not necessarily how they were funded. Um, we will certainly try for the city-owned properties to get them funded, um, in that manner through the, the, uh, the demolition funds provided by the state. That's, it's only applicable if it's city-owned property. For the ones here that are privately owned, we'll place liens on them. But this is something that was, this work had been done a little while ago. And it is something I'm working to continually integrate the demolition programs that had been done by the building department, um, through the technical service, uh, and what was the former inspections department, uh, with what's done up in housing.
You know, I, I, I agree with, uh, we should demolish as many as possible, but you know what? What, uh, you know, if we could do this continuously, we should keep on them, uh, demolishing. Uh, uh, the thing is that when we do it on an emergency basis, we are paying a lot more, right? We are not paying less.
We do, we do.
Than twenty-five thousand dollars a house, whatever.
Well, that, that, the, the, the thirty-five thousand dollar per property limit that was set by the state through the HFMA funds is, may or may not cover the full cost of the demolition. That's what they established and we, we apply that on an average basis so that the average of the homes that we take down are thirty-five thousand. If you recall, that's why we came back to council more recently to increase that because it was twenty-five previously. Too low. But your, Councilman, you, it, the, the point is not lost. When you do things in an emergency, um, they, they may be more expensive. But again, especially for the ones on Brunswick Avenue, for example, it was fire damage and that's.
I, I understand that, I saw those properties, I remember the ones on Lamberton. Uh, I was, I was the one that recommended that they demolish them. Uh, uh, because, you know, building was falling down, you know, it's, 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 it's good. It's just that there, if it's gonna be more money doing it to an emergency contracts, you know, uh, we should get with, uh, uh, the, that company that we gave the contract and see what is, you know, what can they do about those? When can they start demolishing their, those properties that they were?
Um, I just, um, Council President?
Yes, go right ahead, Councilwoman Vaughn.
Yeah, um, I just want to quickly state, I just want to follow up with the comments that Councilman Rodriguez is speaking about, talking about emergency basis. Uh, today, we know all the inventory of vacant properties in the city. So going forward, Mr. Delisle, ha- have you taken an assessment of those properties?
We're, we're, we have.
And you understand, you do understand what you have out there, right? Um, an inventory now. So today, are there other properties that you see that are, that, that will fit this criteria of emergent?
Again, these, these properties were demolished in this fashion because of the, the fire damage. Again, these, these properties were demolished in this fashion because of the, the fire damage or that the buildings were falling down into the street. There are.
I agree, I understand, I understand. I have no problem with this particular resolution, but I mean, going forward, I would be very hesitant knowing, we, we all know all the vacant properties that are in our borders and the risks that they pose. And I would think that we would be, you would be proactive right now in, in having a schedule of which ones need to be taken down based on their risk. So have we, you, uh, taken an inventory of which properties, public or private, that pose a risk that needs to be taken down within the next couple of days, the next couple of weeks, next couple of months? They should be prioritized by risk, right? So thereby you can avoid, and as to Councilman Rodriguez's point, to avoid coming to council on emergency basis and spending extra money that our municipality just doesn't have.
Oh, the, the point is certainly not lost. This is not the preferred way to do it when it's an emergency or it's, you know, it's become a, a danger or it's, you know, or a fire damage. Um, we have approximately eighteen hundred city-owned properties between lots and, and buildings and we are continuing to evaluate them on an ongoing basis. And we'll be putting together future schedules and demolitions on a proactive manner and, and taking into account the strategic demolition plan that we brought to council before, right? Focusing on ones that are identified by the, by the police, by, are imminent hazards, by the building department, strategic areas, the corridors. So absolutely, Councilwoman.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome.
Twenty two seven nine is for consideration brought up by the Department of Recreation, National Resources and Cultural, Maria Richardson, Director. This resolution is to accept a bid in awarding a contract to E Defense LLC in an amount not to exceed one hundred and twenty nine thousand six, seven hundred and sixty dollars. Bid twenty twenty dash two seven. Twenty dash two eighty, resolution authorizing the execution of a memorandum of understanding between the City of Trenton and the United States Soccer Federation, Federation Foundation.
Uh, uh, Councilwoman, I mean, Councilwoman, a, a President, Council President?
Yes, go right ahead, Councilwoman Vaughn.
So, um, twenty two eighty, uh, is Director Richardson on the line?
Yes, she is.
I am.
Yes, can you, um, give us an overview of this program?
Um, yes, basically, um, this would be, um, a collaboration between the City of Trenton and the, uh, United States Soccer Federation Foundation under which, um, they will, uh, build a footsole, uh, in Monsignor Lipinski Park, um, which would benefit the, the members of, um, the neighborhood, basically, and the residents at large. Since, uh, uh, by the, for the last probably four to five years, that Monsignor Lipinski Park has been used, uh, by soccer, uh, players from the different neighborhoods. So this, um, memorandum of understanding will allow the Soccer Federation to build a footsole. They will provide the city with a twenty five thousand dollars grant and the other thirty five thousand dollars would be, uh, paid from the Mercer Playground.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, they're gonna build what and where?
It's a, it's a mini pitch soccer court, which is basically a footsole court.
Okay.
It's a small, uh, soccer field on the hard surface. It's, um, basically very recommendable.
No, no, I understand, and where, where, what park, where is it gonna be located?
Lipinski Park.
The North Ward.
Oh, in the North Ward? And, uh, near Father Rocco Park, where is it gonna be in the North Ward?
That is.
In a Polish section.
I'm sorry. It's near Helene Fold Hospital.
Yeah.
Lipinski Park.
Okay.
Okay, um, Council President, if I could speak?
Yes, go right ahead.
So Maria, I'm, I have a real issue with this, um, and I'll tell you why. Because you said that they spoke to the community at large, the majority of the community around there, they're Polish, and I, I didn't know about any meeting with the community. There is no parking around there. This will cause extreme amount of cars. There's a school nearby, there's a church nearby, it's a very densely populated area and I have a problem with this.
Um, Councilwoman, um, we, in the year two thousand eighteen, the Department of Recreation conducted a whole citywide assessment of the recreational needs of the city. It was published last year, two thousand nineteen, and one of the findings was that soccer players have increased throughout the city, particularly around the areas where people of European descent and African descent live. Lipinski Park happens to be one of those places where we have the most soccer players throughout the city. And, uh, this is not replacing, this is not, uh, going to increase the traffic in the court. It, it will just make it convenient for the population that is already using it.
It is gonna increase.
Since two thousand eighteen, we have been issuing permits in Lipinski Park to be used as a soccer field. We do not have soccer facilities there and that's why we thought that it would be convenient just to put the, the hard surface there, but it's basically being used by the same people in the neighborhood. We, we are not expecting to have any increase in the traffic there.
I, I, I'm sorry, Maria, but normally when something of this, this, uh, amount, something like this happens, normally the folks that surround, that live in a neighborhood around that park should have been able to come and have a discussion about this. Because it is going to bring in, it's not just gonna be the people in the neighborhood that are going to play soccer unless they're part of the United States Soccer Federation Foundation. I mean, I don't even know who that foundation is and what it make, what it's made up of. But, you know, just because they're European descent doesn't mean say they play soccer.
I, I am not understanding your point, Councilwoman. I, I'm mentioning only the fact that during the, the assessment, um, and the assessment included different stakeholders of the city and, uh, I'm, I'm gonna.
Who were the stakeholders? Who were the stakeholders?
We have, um, a hundred and nineteen different organizations in the city responded the tool that was put out. Um, it was posted in the city website. Um, there were several, probably, uh, twelve focus groups with stakeholders throughout the city.
But I don't know who these stakeholders are. I don't even know if they're from the North Ward.
Everybody that was, that, it was part of community, um, groups, recreation groups, athletics groups. I can send you a copy of the assessment.
Because I, because I will tell you, and in the past, and I have talked to both administrations, that, that Helene Fold Hospital had, had made a request to open up that park where their hospital is so that they, their staff would have access to it and they could hold house fairs and community events in that park. And, and, but now you want to make a soccer field in there and I, I just can't believe that that's not going to add to the traffic in that area.
No, I, I need to correct.
If there's, if there's over a hundred groups that want to be involved, they don't all live in that neighborhood.
Um, Councilwoman, we are not talking about a soccer field, we are talking about a footsole court, which basically has the same size of a, uh, basketball court.
Basketball court.
This is a, um, footsole courts are used for six players to play at, at once. Not, we are not talking about a, um, whole soccer field like the one that we have in, in Father's Rocco, right? We are talking about a basketball court, basically. So it's, it's, it would only attract twelve people at the same time, um, not hundreds of people. And that doesn't include, I'm sorry?
That's not very clear in the resolution. All it says is build a mini pitch soccer court. I don't know what a mini pitch soccer court is.
Well, in the information sent out, there were photos with dimensions of the soccer, of the footsole. I can provide that to you tomorrow if you wish, or, um, I can send it to you before one, before Thursday.
Okay. So, so I just, I, I would just like to say something, Maria, I know you, you do a great job, but I just, I just want to say something for future reference. And out of respect for all the ward council people, when something like this is being planned, it would be helpful, pre any of this coming for a vote, to talk to the council person as to what the plans are.
Um, with all due respect, um, Councilwoman, this was part of a grant that you approved last year. The plans, uh, to do this were part of the Mercer Playground, so this is.
It doesn't matter, it still, it still had, it doesn't matter, it still has to be discussed. You gave us, you gave us a resolution to approve funding for these various activities for various parks to fix them up, but I don't recall them saying they wanted to do soccer in there. And all I, I would have needed was a conversation ahead of time and this would have been missed.
I will keep that into consideration.
But, but, but the problem is, and, and I'm just, I'm just saying, and, and this is how normally things happen when something is planned, and this goes to all the directors, when you plan something in a ward, it is just common courtesy to give heads up and talk to the ward council person, whether it be in north, south, east or west, and that would be appreciated.
I will keep that into consideration, Councilwoman.
President, President McBride?
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, I just want to reiterate, uh, that, uh, these meetings are where you ask questions uh, about what's happening in the city. Uh, it's very clear to me that this seems like a, a very important project, one that I support a hundred percent, um, and that if people have questions about, or, or they're not clear, um, there shouldn't be any, there shouldn't be any kind of back room to let me check with certain council people. Uh, I think in the, um, spirit of transparency, I would hope, uh, that, you know, we are operating in full transparency when it comes to consideration for city projects. Um, as an at-large councilman, um, I think that, uh, all council members should have the ability to review, uh, these projects and that, um, wards are not the personal, uh, thieftoms of, uh, ward council people. Uh, if I'm not mistaken, I think I might have gotten more votes in the North Ward than the North Ward Councilwoman. And so I would just say, uh, that we can, uh, discuss these things.
That is not true.
I didn't, I did not interrupt you, so please don't interrupt me. Um, and so I just want to be very clear, uh, that, uh, any conversation about, uh, the city's, uh, business should be shared before the whole council. And, uh, Maria, I want to say you did a really great job answering questions, uh, about this project and I don't think it's, uh, proper, uh, for, uh, ward council people to consider themselves, uh, more important than anyone else on this particular, uh, body. Thank you very much.
Um, Maria, this is Councilwoman McBride.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Yes, so, so, um, I'm, I'm looking at this and, uh, I voted no for the funding. Um, but I'm looking at this, um, twenty dash two eighty, and the problem that I'm having with it is this. The, I know of six leagues over there on that, that use that Lipinski Field for, uh, for basketball and I know they have a workout, um, regimen that goes on over there in Lipinski, uh, field. And I also frequent over there and the space, that curve around that park is very, very narrow. Now, I want to know two things. Was the, when you put this out, did the information go to the people that utilize that part? Because I, I know that the, uh, basketball, uh, league that they have over there, they use that part because it's the only part that they can basically go in now without a whole lot of violence occurring. And the workout regimen that they host over there, they host that every day. Uh, I think it's a two-hour regimen. And now you have the basketball, uh, court with the, with the league over there. You have the, uh, um, the fitness program over there. And, and although you said it's only, um, six to twelve people, if you drive through there right now, you cannot get through there and today is a Tuesday and it's in like six o'clock or whatever, you can't get through there because of the tight, um, the tight space on that curve around that corner. So when you say you put out the information and, uh, a hundred and so, um, odd people responded, then I, I would think that, that the, the, the league players would have responded too. And so would the fitness program, they would have responded too. And so like, when I seen this here, I'm like, you know, what are you gonna do with that amount of people in that small space? Because the league has already taken up a lot of the spaces for the homeowners. Now you got the, uh, twelve extra people and you have the fitness class. And plus you have the, um, the Father Rocco's that you could have fitted another miniature, uh, 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 soccer space into. Rather than to assign this space to Lipinski Park, why wasn't it considered to make a miniature soccer court or mini pa, a mini pitch soccer court over at Father Rocco's? Because that is very crowded over there. And I just don't see where the league players were considered. I don't see where the fitness people were considered and I don't see where you considered the fact that you could have used Father Rocco's park that is three blocks upward. I, I just don't, I just don't get this and I don't get that you would add any more traffic to that area than is already there. And God forbid, if any of those players were there during that, uh, uh, after school, because if you've ever been in that community after school, you would understand exactly what the Councilwoman is saying. You cannot exit downhill street at three, from three to four thirty in the afternoon at all during a school year. So I, I'm just concerned about the whole, the whole thing and I don't understand why this particular mini pitch soccer court was not added to that gigantic field that we have over there at Father, Father Rocco's. I'm, I'm just not.
We didn't add it to Father Rocco's because they didn't say a, a field, a soccer field there and it would be kind of counterproductive to have another, a mini pitch where we have a full uh, size soccer field rather than, um, incorporating it in the neighborhoods. The idea of footsoles is to have them in the neighborhoods where the children can walk without going five, six, uh, blocks, right? Um, it would not preclude the, uh, basketball court or the fitness program as the, the footsole would be in, uh, in the surface where, uh, the kids used to, uh, skate before. So it's a whole separate area that it's being used for kickball right now. For the last four, five years, the city has actually, um, issued permits for that small area. for that small area in the back of the park, except that there is no, there are, there are no conditions to play in soccer, but people still get permits for that, right? So it would not be excluding other sports that are actually being, uh, played there at the moment, at the present. It would be just additional.
Council President?
Yes, go right ahead, Mr. Harrison.
Um, my question is, uh, the, uh, mini pitch soccer courts, are we planning them all around the city to, uh, Mary Richardson?
Um, yes, the idea is to have one, uh, mini pitch in each ward. Um, but we need to use the money as we get it, right? Uh, council voted last year, um, for us to accept a Mercer Play Grant that included the mini pitch in Lipinski Park. It's actually laid out in the grant. Um, so, yeah, the plan is to continue to move throughout the city and to have, um, one in each ward.
Okay, thank you, because like I said, uh, soccer, there's a lot of kids who want to play soccer all around the city, so we should give kids, like my other council member said, all sports. And like you said, it's been a work for more than a year. So thank you. Thank you for your hard work.
Rock Street, Roselle, New Jersey, which was awarded on an emergency basis for the roof replacement and related roof repairs at Trenton Firehouse Engine Number One for the Department of Public Works Division of Public Property in an amount not to exceed sixty-two thousand one hundred and twenty-three dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Uh, council president?
Go right ahead, councilwoman.
No, I just want to make sure that we're roll calling, uh, Mr. Berry. Can you make sure that we roll call in twenty-two eighty?
Yes, I will. Uh, do you want that also on twenty dash two eighty-one?
Uh, no.
Okay. Twenty dash two eighty-two, resolution rejecting bid received for on-call plumbing services and repairs for the city facilities bid twenty-twenty dash thirty-three. Twenty dash two eighty-three, resolution accepting a bid and awarding a contract to the Golden Building Maintenance in an amount not to exceed one hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars, two hundred and eighty. Bid twenty-twenty dash twenty-one. Twenty dash two eighty-four, resolution authorizing the submission of a grant application and execution of a grant contract with the New Jersey Department of Transportation for the Chestnut Avenue Rehabilitation Project. Twenty dash two eighty-five, resolution authorizing the submission of a grant application and execution of a grant contract with the New Jersey Department of Transportation for the West State Rehabilitation Project.
Uh, uh, question, um, council president, it's Robin Vaughn.
Go right ahead, councilwoman.
Um, is, uh, Director Owen Terry on the line? He's not on the line?
Yes, he is. He should be. Yes, Wally? I hear him, but I don't, he needs to turn up his speaker.
Terry is here. Yes.
Um, oh, Mr. Owen Terry, um, twenty-two eighty-five, I see that there's a resolution here to, um, rehab, uh, West State Street, right? Is that the pavement contract? What is that exactly?
That is both, uh, milling and reconstruction of the whole street and also any needed sidewalks that is needed in that neighborhood. From, uh, that's from Prospect to Parkside Avenue.
Prospect to Parkside?
Parkside. Yes, because we did, we did car home to Prospect.
Yeah, yeah, okay, got it, got it, got it, got it. Okay, very good. And do you know the timeframe on that?
Oh, well, that is what I'm asking you. I'm asking you to give us the permission to submit.
Okay, very good.
So once you get that, then we'll move on with it.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Move on. Twenty dash two ninety-three, resolution rewarding a contract through a fair and open process in accordance with NJSA one-nine semicolon four-four A dash two-zero-four E T S E Q to Keller and Kirkpatrick Incorporated in an amount not to exceed fifty-two thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars. RFP twenty-twenty dash nine.
Madam President?
Yes.
Uh, 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 coming to, uh, Mr. Owen Terry. Uh, this is for Whittaker, Whittaker or the way to, I believe it's South Clinton. Uh, Mr. Owen Terry, are you listening?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. Uh, yes, I, uh, mentioned to you the corner of Whittaker and Rubbling. There's about probably less than a hundred feet that is destroyed completely. It's the corner of Whittaker and Rubbling, and you're going to go by there fixing Whittaker. Can you ask this contractor to cover that little, at least a hundred feet of, of, of rubble? Because it's real, real bad. I don't know, uh, that is, I believe it's, it is, is between the, the east and south ward. I believe it's the George or, or Mr. Richardson's ward, but they have to know about this. Uh, Whittaker and Rubbling is real, real bad in there. It's like, I tell you, you can hardly drive to there. It's just a small piece of rubble.
Okay, I do believe that we have Whittaker on our list for roof construction for this year.
Yeah, no, no, the Whittaker, this, this resolution is for, on Whittaker.
Okay, I will look at it.
For Whittaker, and it, it's going to pass by there, by that corner. That's what I'm, I'm saying, if you can't take care of that little corner there. It's, it's not, not, uh, the whole block, it's only about a hundred feet or so that for some reason, I don't know who messed it up, if it was Water Works or whoever it was, or P C G, but it's, it is a mess. I know it's, uh, Councilman Richardson have been to there, or Councilman Moschar have been to there, but it is, it real bad. Real bad, it's just that corner. So otherwise, you're going to have a nice, Whittaker is going to be looking nice, but that corner there is going to be messy, I tell you.
Okay, councilman, thank you. We're going to, we check, we look at-
Okay, so you're trying, you're, you're checking out, it's Whittaker and Rubbling.
Mr. Santiago?
Yeah.
The council president, it's, it's, uh, council president Michelle and Councilman Harrison's, right on the border, yeah. I know exactly.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Cross from Whittaker Lakers. Yeah, exactly.
So, but have you seen that, uh, have you seen that?
Yes. I know what you're talking about. Yeah, yeah.
It's messed up, real bad, real bad. Okay, I, I don't want to say, you know, take trouble for you people, that's why I mentioned it's either you or Councilmember Moschar, because he's on the border there.
Following resolutions are being brought by Division of Finance. Twenty dash two-eight-six, resolution awarding a contract to S S H I International Corporation, awarded through New Jersey State Contract, number M dash zero-zero-zero-three-eight-nine-eight-five-one in an amount not to exceed thirty-six thousand two hundred and four fifty. Twenty dash two-eight-seven, resolution authorizing the use of an estimated tax levy for the purpose of issuing twenty-twenty-third August quarter tax bills. Twenty dash two-eight-eight, resolution providing for the insertion of a special item of revenue in the budget, in the budget of municipality pursuant to NJSA four-zero-A semicolon four dash eight-seven, Chapter one-five-nine, P dot L nineteen forty-eight, COVID-nineteen Emergency Homeless Housing, two hundred thousand dollars.
President McBride?
Uh, 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 um, council president?
I'm going to go to Councilman, uh, Blakely first, and then to you, councilwoman Vaughn.
Um, I just want to, uh, clarify or just, uh, bring to everyone's attention. Um, there has been several glaring, um, misspellings, um, in this docket. Uh, if we can have the clerk's office, uh, do a better job of reviewing this. I'm seeing this inexplicable errors of spelling that, uh, is not a positive reflection on, uh, this city. Like, we have to do better. I mean, there's double words, there's misspellings, there's just, it's just unacceptable. And, and we, as a city, uh, must have a docket, uh, that, uh, is clear, that it, that does not have any errors in it. And so I just wanted to say that, uh, for the record and hope, uh, that, uh, this doesn't happen again. Thank you.
Mr. Berry, if you can correct this?
Yes.
Um, I had a question on two eighty-eight.
Go right ahead.
Uh, it's Councilwoman Robin Vaughn, um, is, uh, Joan Schoenhardt available?
This is Janet.
Oh, Janet, I'm sorry. I always get it, I'm sorry, apologies. Um, you say it's a special item, and you need to insert it into the budget. It isn't above and beyond what we approved and-
No, this is, um, it was, um, approved, um, I'm not sure what data was approved as, um, a grant. But when we, when we did the budget, I did not include it in the budget. So I have to include it as a chapter one fifty-nine, okay? So when you look at, when you look at the detail of the budget that you have, that it does, that, those listing of grants, this was not included. So I have to now include it into the budget. And that's how you include it. After you have your budget adoption, this is how you include grants into your budget as a one, chapter one fifty-nine.
Oh, okay, so, okay, so this two hundred thousand dollar, this is a grant and, uh, to provide funding for additional COVID-nineteen Emergency Homeless Housing?
I, I believe this was the two hundred thousand that was for the Y W C A.
Okay.
Okay, so, so I didn't, I, I didn't get that into the budget, so now I'm putting it into the budget.
But they, they never said that the Y W C A was getting two hundred thousand. They said that they owe taxes, and it was-
It's a grant, it's a grant. It's a grant, a grant for the COVID Center that was the for, I believe, uh, COVID emergency, yes. Um, yes, so that, that's what it says, two hundred thousand. So I don't remember if it was that and mine, it might be a typo, I'm not sure, but I don't think so. So it is a grant that it was not in the region when you adopted the, uh, budget last, last time. It was not included. If you look at the detail, it was not included. So now I am putting it into that budget. So next year, when you look at the previous year's budget, it will be included in the budget.
Okay.
Also can spend from it. Right now, we can't spend from it until I put it into the budget.
Okay. Um, however, though, you have it in here as being, um, earmarked for emergency homeless housing.
I doubt it's what, it, it was what the resolution was. Whatever the resolution was, that's what it is. I'm just, I'm not changing the resolution, I'm just putting it into the budget.
Uh-oh, this is not, this is not-
Can I, can I ask who, um, earmarked it for, um, emergency homeless housing then? Uh, is the B A available to expound on that? How did we earmark this for emergency homeless housing? Uh, B A Cruz, are you available to answer that question?
Uh, yeah, councilwoman, this is actually a, a, a grant, uh, that the city, uh, was awarded for the C Center.
No. No, it was for the, the Y W C A. Sorry. It was for the Y W C A, I believe, that it was the, uh, I believe it was the Smith Grant, and it might have been for twenty thousand, I'm not sure.
Uh, this is, this is Shakira Abdul Ali. I think I, so we received a small grant, well, small, it's not small, fifty thousand dollars from the, from the Smith Family Foundation, and we applied for another grant. All of the grants that we applied for were for emergency housing services, that, I mean, the, the couple of grants that we applied for. Uh, because we knew we had, uh, I think it was a million dollars, uh, uh, B A Cruz, you can, you can, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but whatever it was, we had kind of identified, um, out of our own funds. But then we went after money in order to not have to spend that money from our own, uh, operating. So this, so these two amounts, amounted to two hundred thousand was, it was for emergency housing. We didn't specify it specifically, but it was for emergency housing. Uh, we may have requested it for the Y or for the C Center, uh, but that's what it was for. So we can, we, it's not specifically for, um, either one of those two areas, we can use it on either one.
Move on?
Councilwoman Vaughn?
Janet Schillauer?
Yes.
Um, I, that's fine.
Janet Schillauer, if you could mute yourself, we're getting feedback from your mic.
Okay. Madam President?
Go right ahead, Mr. Berry.
Twenty dash two-eight-nine, resolution providing for the insertion of a special item of revenue in the budget. In the budget of a municipality pursuant to NJSA forty-A semicolon four dash eighty-seven, Chapter one-five-nine, P L nineteen forty-eight, Sustainable Jersey, E S E N G, two thousand dollars. Department of Water and Sewer, Mr. David Smith, acting director, is asking consideration for twenty-two-nine-oh, resolution awarding contract to W W Granger Incorporated, awarded through New Jersey Contract Number M dash zero-zero-zero-two-one-nine dash fleet zero-zero-five-six-six in the amount not to exceed forty thousand dollars. Twenty dash two-nine-one, resolution accepting a bid and awarding a contract to Allied Construction Group, Inc., in an amount not to exceed six hundred and ninety-three thousand three hundred and sixty dollars. Bid twenty-twenty dash twenty-five.
Oh, I'm sorry, you didn't finish, sorry, excuse me.
Bid twenty-twenty dash twenty-five.
Um, council president?
Go right ahead, councilwoman Vaughn.
Uh, is acting director Davis Smith on the line?
Yeah, yeah, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes. So twenty-two ninety-one, uh, Allied-
Corrosion control.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Can you describe, um, what work are they going to be doing?
Yeah, yeah, no, I have no problem with that. The, uh, they are, um, they are installing a corrosion, uh, control system at our water filtration plant off of Route twenty-nine, um, that's going to provide, um, uh, orthophosphate, which is a corrosion inhibitor, uh, which is designed to reduce lead levels in our system. Uh, and this is, uh, this is specifically for our gravity gradient. We have, we have two gradients in our system, the high-service gradient and the gravity gradient. Uh, I mentioned this a couple, uh, meetings ago, uh, the gra- this, this project, um, again, uh, right now, the gravity gradient does not have corrosion control protection. Uh, this, this, this will help reduce lead levels, uh, in the gravity gradient, which serves a, a, a large portion of Trenton. So, so, uh, we've had success with orthophosphate in our high-service gradient. Uh, thus far, we're seeing lead reduction over fifty percent. Uh, uh, as a result of this, uh, chemical addition, uh, we would like to repeat that same, um, measure uh, for the gravity gradient. So, uh, we're really excited about this project. It's going to, it's going to improve a lot of people's lives, and, um, uh, we're looking forward to the implementation.
Is, is this the first application?
No, again, uh, we've done it before, uh, we, we're doing it right now in the high-service gradient. Uh, and now we're looking to, uh, install- Uh, and now we're looking to, uh, install it in the gravity gradient.
Okay, so when, 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 when did we apply the first application and where, at the same location?
Uh, no, so, so there was, the first application, uh, was applied at our central pumping station, which is downstream of the Pennington Reservoir, which feeds the high-service gradient. Uh, this particular application is going to feed the gravity gradient, which is upstream of the Pennington Reservoir. Uh, the reason why the two projects are, are, um, staggered in terms of the schedule is because, uh, we had to do additional studies and, uh, design, uh, effort uh, to make sure that this chemical doesn't get into our reservoir and contaminate it. So, uh, yeah.
Uh, so a question for you, so we're making this investment, um, in the, uh, the Pennington Reservoir, but a, a lot of the capital projects, um, speak to, um, um, eliminating the Pennington Reservoir.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
And moving to the storage tanks.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
So why are we making this investment in the Pennington Reservoir when we deem it to be, uh, it's gonna sunset and gonna be obsolete?
Well, essentially, this project that we're doing right now is, uh, not only gonna mitigate lead in the very near future, because listen, you know, just understand that the, the reservoir replacement project, first of all, we don't have the funding to do it. So the project is basically stalwarted, you know? Right now, there is no reservoir replacement project because we don't have the money to do anything. Um, so, but even if we had the money to do it, it's not a one-year project, it's a multiple-year project. And so, um, putting corrosion protection in now guarantees our community lead protection as early as the end of this year. Um, and, uh, and the system that we're actually putting in place here at the plant is going to be the long-term solution, uh, down the road. So the money that we're investing in our system as, as a result of this, um, request is going to mitigate lead as early as the end of this year, if it's, if it's approved. And, uh, will continue to do so for the foreseeable future. So it's not like we're gonna spend six hundred and ninety-some thousand dollars and then scrap it when the Pennington Reservoir is taken offline, if it ever gets taken offline. Um, this is an investment that will, um, that will, uh, be in use for the next twenty-plus, probably, you know, for, for the foreseeable future.
But isn't that the strategy, isn't that part of the A C O, isn't that one, isn't that one of the deliverables required by the, uh, D E P to take the Pennington Reservoir offline?
Uh, yes, uh, it is, it is, but this, this project, again, maybe I'm not explaining it correctly, you know, the, this corrosion, regardless if the Pennington Reservoir exists or not, we still need adequate corrosion control protection in our system to reduce lead levels. We violated lead in two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen because we didn't have the right water quality implemented. The orthophosphate treatment, which is what we're proposing here, is used in ninety percent of the water systems nationwide. It's a tested, proven chemical and, uh, and it works. Uh, we're seeing that it reduced lead levels in the high-service gradient by fifty-six percent after three months of usage. So, so, you know, the way I see it, you know, this is an absolute need, you know, because there is a, there is a segment of our system that is in need of this chemical. And, uh, and it's going to reduce lead very abruptly. You're gonna see in a matter of months, the lead dropping as a result of this chemical. And if the reservoir gets replaced or not, you know, time will tell. But nonetheless, I mean, this, this system that we're putting in place is going to be there regardless if the, if the reservoir gets replaced or not. The, the storage, the reservoir replacement project is a storage project. Meaning that if the plant goes down, you rely on your storage to serve water to your community. This particular project?
Agreed, agreed, I mean, you know, I don't know all the details like you do, um, Director Smith. However, I, I reviewed the bonds, right, that you put forward, um, that are still pending, right? Because we gotta get more information from you and that's what I'm trying to understand.
Okay.
Um, as we go along, because it's reported and those, I mean, you requested funding to pretty much sunset or, you know, take offline the reservoir and transfer to the storage tanks, right?
Right.
And, and, uh, I, I mean, I have total confidence that we all gonna come to some agreement as to what proper level of investment we need to make and in the timeframe. And, but my thing is, if we're gonna be taking the reservoir offline and that's part of the consent order from our regulators, then, I mean, we just gotta be careful as to what level of investment we're gonna continue to do and kind of balance it. But I understand, and I'm not gonna take up any more of your time on this, but I'm kind of clear. But, uh, but if you can kind of provide clarity as to, I think it was the, uh, thirty-three million dollar, I mean, the, the thirty-three million dollar bond that, that's pending, that we did, we didn't pass, but, you know, you outlined that, that you're taking the reservoir offline and, and you need those storage tanks to do it and, and, and right here, you're investing in a process that doesn't really, it's not strategic, right? I guess it's?
No, no, it is, it is, it is.
It is strategic?
It is, it absolutely is, understand that this is not a waste of money. I understand where you're going, all right? This is not a waste of money, we're not gonna put this system in and then scrap it when the reservoir goes offline, okay? We're gonna, this is the long-term solution, so we're gonna put this system in and this system will remain for the next, for the foreseeable future.
Okay.
Okay, unless there's a better treatment chemical?
Okay, so this, so this is gonna, so this is gonna support the storage tanks as well?
This, yeah, yeah, exactly, so whether it's open water storage or whether it's storage tanks, this is the system that's our long-term solution.
Okay, very good, okay, thank you.
And you have a segment, you have a segment of the community that needs this, all right? And the tanks, the tank project is gonna take years to complete. And we cannot afford to delay this project because, you know, again, the, the people need it, the, the, the community needs it. There's a segment of our system that needs this, they need lead mitigation.
Oh, so the tank project is gonna take years?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely, the tank, the tank project is a multi-phase project that the D E P is indicating that we should get complete by two, twenty-twenty-three, okay? So it's at least a twenty-twenty-three project, you know, um, and that's an aggressive schedule.
That's only two years, that's only two years from now.
Well, twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-three, that's three years, you know, but that's an aggressive, and that's an aggressive schedule, all right? Mind you, that's a little aggressive. And, uh, you know, it, it could very well take three to four years, but in my opinion, and I'm not, I'm just saying, like, if we can get lead mitigation in now, that's three years less, you know, without it. And, you know, I just, I, I, I think it would behoove us to make any, uh, improvements necessary to reduce lead throughout our system and that's, that's what this does. And this, and this by no means is a waste of money, this is a long-term solution.
No, 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 I wasn't indicating this was, but I was?
I know you weren't, I, I, I know you weren't, I know you weren't, I'm just, I'm just, you know, I'm, I'm just giving you my opinion on the matter.
Yeah, I was just trying to understand what's tactical, what's strategic, what's short-term, what's long-term, that's all, thank you.
Great, can I?
Madam President?
Yes, go right ahead, Councilwoman Vaughn.
Before Mr. Smith, uh, goes, I have a question for him. He mentioned that there was, I think it was forty million dollars issuing bonds for the cover of the reservoir. The job was not done.
Which, which one is this now?
It was about ten years ago or further, there was an ordinance for a reservoir cover. That's what D E P told us, this is my mate told us.
Right, well, you know, it's funny.
But, but you said that, but, but let me finish, you say, you say that there's no money. Uh, I believe two tanks were placed there, if I'm not wrong, two, right? Of these fiberglass tanks, I saw two big tanks there.
You're absolutely right.
What happened with the, what happened with the rest of the money? Because you're saying?
There's still, there's still ten million dollars in the account.
Oh, there's still ten million dollars, so that means what the newspapers were saying that we killed that, that program because there was no money, because we refused to issue the thirty-three million dollars or whatever it was, eighty-three million dollars, so that was not completely, you know, true.
Well, it's, it's, well, there is, there is some validity to it and I'll explain why, okay?
Mr. Smith, Mr. Smith, I, I put a, a, a resolution requesting, eh, financial reports from Water Works, that was about eight to ten months ago.
Right.
We never got any, any reports. We requested explanations on all those ordinances, those bond ordinances that were issued. Ninety-three million, remember, we sat down, we went over them.
The resol, the resolution, can I, mind you, the resolution indicates that the director is to meet, is this the one where the director, you want a director to meet on a quarterly basis, uh, with council? Is that what?
No, no, we get a, a report, a written report, financial report of revenues and expenses that will cover everything from, everything from Water Works.
Okay, so?
It's there, you asked the city club for it because we did, we passed it about eight, ten months ago.
A financial report?
Peter Pico was there when we passed it, financially, quarterly financial reports. We want to, we wanted to know the revenues and the expenses of Water Works because we were handing this, uh, no, it's, it, it, you're saying four hundred million dollars for this project to the lead service lines and to all these improvements. You know, the eighty-three million dollars are not gonna fix it, it's about four hundred million dollars. We needed to know what happened with those other ninety-three million dollars that were issued.
Right, right.
Yeah, 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 last twelve years.
I believe I clarified that.
Let me, let me, let me, let me, let me, let me.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were asking your question, I'm sorry.
Thirty, yeah, but thirty-seven, thirty-seven, eh, thirty-seven million were canceled. But before the thirty-seven, there were ninety-three million. So that means that we're short fifty-four million, there's fifty-four million there that we don't, really, we never got answers on it. We, you know, that, that's why we were very hesitant about approving more bonds.
Yep.
And I told you clearly, you know, we were hesitant because we didn't get the answers from Mr. Doctor Chek or from Mr. Pico, and we didn't get it from you either. So that, you know, that is, I just wanted to say that. Okay, if you have an answer for, for, for my question, you could answer.
Well, there was an answer to your question, uh, uh, Councilman Santiago, and it was provided to you in March. I believe it was March sixteenth where I, I wrote you a memo specifically identifying what, uh, how the ninety-three million was applied. Uh, some of it was applied to lead projects that you, uh, recently approved or have approved in the past. Um, we canceled thirty-seven million dollars worth of bonds very recently, which was approved by council. Uh, there, over the past two years, there were a number of projects that were actually completed that we were converting notes to, uh, to bonds. Uh, you know, so, so it was, I thought, clearly spelled out in March, in the March memo that I provided. Um, and I would, and I, I find that there is some encouraging conversation happening here. Um, I, I, I would be more, uh, we're right now in the process of preparing a report that will further clarify, uh, some of the questions we've received in the past to provide more visibility on the matter. Uh, my intention is to provide this report to the council, uh, early, uh, early July.
Also to, also to D E P.
Uh, that's fine, that's fine as well, but?
Yeah, because they are the ones that are accusing us.
Well, you know, the council being the legislative body, I think, is the, the more important part of the equation here. You know, if we, if we can, uh, come to an understanding about our financial state now and in the future, um, and you are comfortable and, and eventually, you know, the bonds do get approved, I think it makes, uh, you know, uh, our, our stance with D E P, it really strengthens that relationship and allows us to move forward. But, but we, we haven't gotten there yet and, uh, I think with the report that we're working on, with the forensic, uh, analysis that you've requested in the past, which we're working on right now, which we're intending to provide to you, again, working on a draft, uh, working diligently on a draft, which I'm hoping is going to meet your expectations. We're gonna get it to you, uh, probably, you know, early July, and then let's meet, and then hopefully in August, uh, we'll re-up the bonds and we can get this thing, uh, moving in the right direction. Um, but I understand you still had some questions. I thought I, I provided some good responses, but obviously there's still?
Uh, I am very happy, I am very happy with this answer. Finally, I got a good answer from our director. You know, I, I am very satisfied with the answer, yes, yes, it's gonna keep going. It's not, eh, the newspapers have been saying that council, that council this, council that, these responsible council people that are doing this are doing that, you know? Hey, you know, uh, we were requesting information, you know, that, you know, and I told, I personally, when I, we sat together, I told you, you know, we need those answers before we can approve any more, eh, eh, bonds. You know, the, the less service line bonds, eh, eh, you know, we, we're gonna approve them, we are gonna approve those, that's not a problem.
Right, okay.
There's repetition, repetition of, of ordinances of fifteen years ago, twelve years ago, the same language, you know? Eh, when you read that, when you see that, and I say, what are you, you say, what, what, what happened with the money? Where did the money go? What happened with those repairs that were supposed to be done twelve years ago? Were they done, weren't they done, you know, that's, that's, that's what we need to know, you know, what happened with it? And you were there, yeah, and you, and you, I know that you were very dedicated, so that, you know, that, that we saw the situation, definitely, definitely it was.
Yep, some of the work was done, a lot of it wasn't, and, and quite frankly, some of it isn't even needed, you know? Um, so, so, you know, I, I'm looking forward to working with you, uh, and the team, you know, moving this forward. Uh, and I appreciate your response, thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Uh, Council President?
Go right ahead, Councilwoman.
Just one last question for Acting Director Davis Smith. Um, have you filed the annual, the twenty-nineteen annual revenue report to, uh, the B P U?
Uh, I do not believe so, I, I will double-check and, uh, do you want a copy, if we'd have filed it?
Hello, can I? We have filed it. The B P U report has filed for the, for, we have filed it, the March thirty-first deadline. We met that deadline or a couple of days later, so it is filed.
Um, can we, can we get a copy of it?
Yes, you can.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Send it to the whole council, please, thanks.
Thank you.
Council President?
Yes.
Uh, could I ask Mr. Smith the question?
Yes, go right ahead.
Okay, Mr. Smith, uh, question, you brought it to D, it was brought up about D E P, how's that lawsuit going? Are, do we have any answers yet or?
Well, uh, we just recently received it, so, uh, currently, right now, uh, we're in the process of digesting the information that was communicated to us and, as a matter of fact, I have a meeting with, uh, uh, you know, uh, internally, you know, with, uh, the law director and others, uh, you know, from the city to discuss our strategy and response. Um, you know, my initial impression is, uh, some of the deadlines that they've provided, uh, are more aggressive than what we originally agreed upon, um, so that to me is hard to understand, uh, fathom. Uh, but I think there is opportunity, uh, here also for negotiation. So, uh, uh, obviously it's concerning to get, uh, you know, a litigation, uh, 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 and I'm hoping that, uh, we can, uh, I hope we can settle this without getting it, without it getting much further along, I guess, I'll leave it at that, thank you. Anything else?
Uh, yeah, uh, I'm sorry, one more question, it's a quick one, uh, uh, Council President.
Go right ahead, Councilwoman Vaughn.
Um, Acting Director Smith?
Yes.
Last week, I, I saw that some of the deadlines that D E P put forward, at least in the media, I don't know how accurate it is because I don't trust anything what the local press prints, but, um, they had some timelines or some type of schedule that they wanted you to comply with as far as completing the implementation of the lead service line replacement across the service areas, right? You know, they, they, they had to, I think they, they had a timeline for you to fulfill at, at the top of the year, um, and they have a couple toward the end of the year and into the first quarter of next year, twenty-twenty-one.
Yes.
Um, and then last week, uh, um, one of your, um, colleagues, uh, uh, Michael Walker, he put forward a global email that he sent out across the city that, uh, Trenton Waterworks replaced five hundred, uh, service lines.
Yeah.
And, and then I read in the paper that you, you guys replaced eight hundred and twenty eight, and, you know, what is the exact number? And I had, and I, I think sometimes a while back, the council has been asking for reports, you know, as you guys, you know, move along and completing the work as to how many, where and what addresses, uh, these, uh, vendors been, you know, servicing. So can you give us a quick overview as to where the realistic number, where you actually, your actual numbers of what homes and residences you actually replace?
Yeah, I think, I think there needs to be more visibility on the program of in and of itself. Uh, we're in the process of developing a lead service line replacement dashboard, which anyone in the public can access a website and find out how we're doing, you know, what's the progress, how many service lines were replaced, you know? Um, so, so that, and that will be updated on a daily basis, so, so there won't be any, uh, uh, you know, so you won't be so much in the dark, you know, on, uh, on, on, on where we are with that program. Uh, but to answer the question, uh, you know, we, uh, eight twenty eight is a more accurate number than the, uh, five hundred, uh, number. We've replaced the eight twenty eight, uh, through, through the contracts, uh, 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 that we've, um, administered. Uh, we have contractors working, uh, directly in Trenton. Um, Spinello, uh, is, 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 as I, uh, I actually responded to an inquiry from, uh, Councilwoman, uh, March, uh, uh, Ms. Caldwell-Wilson, um, related to the work that we're doing in, in Mill Hill, um, you know, which was the first place we started, uh, in, as part of that contract. So, you know, we're committed, uh, to doing work, you know, throughout our system, but we're, we are providing, uh, careful attention to Trenton, and that's where we started, you know, with that contract. Um, so I, I guess I can say this, you know, when the dashboard is available, I will send the council a link to the dashboard, uh, and I'll provide you the information I hope that you're looking for, and again, that's going to be, you know, updated on a regular basis. So as soon as that dashboard is available, and I'll push our consultants to make it available next week, uh, I will be sure to be sending you a link, and, uh, you'll be more informed.
So, so, uh, Director Smith, so are you, as the director of the water utility, as the leader, as the lead manager over there, are you happy as to where you are? Uh, because in the papers today, the BPU seems to think that you only have like two per, less than point two percent, I believe.
Yeah.
Um, completing the replacement. I mean, you're way behind, no?
Uh, we, that, I think the ACL, the way it was written, uh, did not account for the time required to develop a lead inventory, nor did it account for the delays that we experienced, uh, through, that they were imposed by the state, as a matter of fact, uh, as we were required to, uh, enforce a special assessment on, uh, on each property, uh, related to the lead service. I mean, we lost six months, we lost six months as a result of the lead ser, the special assessment, uh, requirement. Uh, we were waiting on answers from the state. So, so, so that's a big, that's a big blow, and then you add COVID to the equation, that's another, that's another substantial blow because we can't go into people's homes, or at least we weren't going into people's homes for, for, for a few months. So, 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 you know, it requires you to pivot and, uh, do, uh, to make changes to your program, which usually results in delays. So, like every large project, okay, there are things, there's curveballs that come your way, and, you know, you have to do your best to manage them. In many cases, they do result in delays to the program. Um, I am, I, sure, could we have done a, a better job? Yeah, I wish the whole program went better. I wish we didn't have the delays from special assessments, I wish we didn't have the delays as a result of COVID. Um, you know, I wish, uh, a number of things. I wish we had more funding from state to, to, uh, proceed further beyond phase two with our program. Um, but nonetheless, you know, related to this lawsuit, I, I think there were some delays that were really out of our hands, and, uh, we're going to push back, you know, on, on, uh, some of these deadlines, so at least that's what I would hope.
Okay, more to come. Thanks.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes, go right ahead.
Twenty dash two nine two, Resolution authorizing a contract award to seventy two hour LLC doing business as National Fleet Auto Group in amount not to exceed eighty three thousand three hundred and ten dollars, twenty four cents. That concludes our resolutions. We have two ordinances for first reading and introduction. The first ordinance, uh, for consideration is twenty dash forty two, brought in by Councilwoman McBride, an ordinance providing for the removal of remains from public view within the city of Trenton. The second one is twenty dash forty three, Adopt a Lot Program, ordinance amending chapter fifty four, city-owned property of the code of the city of Trenton to create, create an Adopt a Lot Program.
I got a question on twenty forty three, Council President.
Go right ahead. I wanted to speak to twenty forty two.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, um, I just wanted to share, uh, with everyone that, um, twenty dash forty two, um, was, uh, was being, uh, well, fourth to you based on, um, the situation, uh, several situations in the city of Trenton, and, um, the last one being, um, a young man, um, that was, um, shot over on Oakland Street, and, um, after the young man was shot, um, he, uh, was out in plain view, and there were a lot of children over there, and, um, it was, it was just a real tragic situation because now we've had about five to six families, um, wanting to be moved from their homes because of this, because of the nightmares that the children experienced, and not just the children, but, you know, the community as a whole. And so, um, I put this ordinance forward, and be, be, um, before I finished, I went, I, uh, met with the prosecutor's office, and, um, the prosecutor, uh, supports the ordinance. Um, he should have sent the letter over, I guess Lourdes will, um, forward it to me, um, tomorrow when she gets in, in support of this. Um, he had, he decided that the prosecutor's office would purchase the tents for the police department, and then the police, because they're the first ones on the scene, would then set the, uh, closed in tents up so that it does not alter or, um, alter the crime scene at all. And so I was very unhappy for us to be on the same page with this, and, um, and that is one of the reasons, um, several of the reasons why I wanted to move this forward based on that last tragedy that we experienced over on Oakland Street. So I wanted the council to know that I had, that the prosecutor's office was in total agreement with this, and he should be sending over, um, a letter of support for this. That's basically all I have for forty, twenty dash forty two. Councilwoman Vaughn?
Um, twenty dash forty three, I believe this is, uh, Director Delisle, Housing Economic Development, no?
Yes.
Yes, so if you can give, um, the community an overview of this, uh, and I just want to just see if you can address my concern about this particular Adopt a Lot Program. You know, I've been reading a lot about, you know, land banking, and I'm looking around our city, and a lot of my constituents are calling me and writing me about, you know, vacant properties that sitting idle for months and years at a time, and the owners are not moving forward with any development or enhancements to the property, and of course, you know, needless to say, the community is eyesore in a lot of respects. And now that you're the head of not only the Housing Economic Development Department, but you're also the Director of Housing Inspections because we merged the two departments, so I just want to hear about your strategy and programs. I, I read through this Adopt a Lot Program, I don't know if that adds to the problem or helps the issue with these vacant properties and land and spaces and throughout our city that there's no real commitment to develop in a, in a short term. And long term, we just don't know, because some of these buildings, you know, because, you know, I mean, I mean, some of them are even long term, they're not even savable or, or can be rehabbed, they have to be, they're total tear down. So I just want to hear, like, what value added is this Adopt a Program, Adopt a Lot Program is going to add if there's no real commitment to do any real development on the land? I mean, this is, has to be a real short-term measure, but you're the expert in this field, so if you could tell me what the way forward is going to be, I much appreciate it.
Uh, Councilwoman, uh, I, I could speak just to this particular ordinance right now. Um, you're right, it is a short-term, um, uh, program. I mean, it's, this is not, uh, meant to solve all the economic problems that we have in the city or deal with all the vacant buildings. You know, but this is, we've received interest from, um, residents or property owners to have access to, uh, city-owned property just to maintain it, to clean it up, pick up the trash, cut the weeds, maybe install a fence, just to, just to keep it clean as an interim measure before development occurs. And, and that's what this is for. The, the city has done this in the past, um, it has passed ordinances and executed leases with people, uh, to give them permission to maintain vacant city-owned lots that may be adjoining their property or another prominent place. Um, and that's a, um, a, a long process, and certainly isn't one that's very encouraging for folks. Your idea here is that it would be something simple to participate in, we would create an online application process to keep track of them, and it would be just for one year, um, to give people the permission to take care of these lots, uh, in their neighborhood.
So are, are there's going to be any incentive with the program to transition ownership to those individuals who's adopting a lot? Is it like some precursor to, um, ownership of the land?
So we, we currently don't have a mechanism to do that right now, uh, you know, unless you had them as designated developers, which I, I don't think that that would be an appropriate mechanism. You mentioned land banking, which is something that was just recently enacted or permitted in New Jersey, uh, just about a year ago, the governor signed that. Um, that's something I'd be very interested in pursuing here, and that could be an appropriate mechanism for making that kind of transfer, um, and I'd be happy to, to engage the, the council with the discussion on that, um, in, in going forward. And I think this, this could grow into something like that, but right now, it, it's, you know, people have expressed interest in maintaining lots in, in spaces, uh, next to their properties just to participate in, in, um, beautifying their neighborhood.
Yeah, and, um, absolutely, and I, you know, because of the appetite in a city by a lot of the residents, you know, to, to get these properties and empty spaces cleaned up, whether it's privately owned or publicly owned, um, yeah, the quicker you can come up or propose a strategy to the, a plan to the, um, or programs to the council as to, and to the public, of course, of how we can clean up these spaces and develop them very quickly. So we have viable folks, I mean, qualified individuals who have a real commitment, who meet the criteria, make some investments, I don't know, um, and we can get maybe local banks to support, you know, provide low-interest loans for them to enhance the property and et cetera, and maybe, you know, um, but to just leave, so what are your plans? Because there are a lot of folks who, who own a lot of these vacant houses, and, and they've been owning them for two, three years now, or not more, and particularly in East Ward, I'm getting, uh, questions about and complaints about, and throughout here in the West Ward, there's houses that are owned by, that are, that are private, that the owner is not in compliance with some of the, our code. So since you're running housing inspections, so what are we doing in housing inspections that making these homeowners of these vacant buildings and homes, why aren't they, why are they in violation? Why aren't we finding them? Why not, why aren't, why aren't we enforcing, you know, uh, compliance? Or are you? I don't want to say you're not, uh, Director Delisle, but does it seem like a lot of these owners are compliant with our city codes as relates to maintaining their properties?
Councilwoman, without a doubt, you know, vacant and abandoned properties is a significant challenge in the city of Trenton, and, um, one of our biggest economic and, and social pro, um, challenges that we have. We do, uh, make, have a robust inspection program, we do have a registration process where we, um, have all the vacant properties registered, and we do issue citations, uh, and bring people to task, um, citing them and bringing them to court. Um, you know, the, this Adopt a Lot Program right now is just for the, the city-owned property. As I mentioned earlier, we have, I think, eighteen hundred city-owned properties, most of them vacant, you know, abandoned, um, uh, residential structures or, or vacant lots. So I'd be, I'd be happy to propose to the council a, um, a, a land banking, um, uh, ordinance to take advantage of that new legislation recently enacted by, by the state to address these very problems.
Yep, yep, I, I, oh, we, we look forward to it, so long as we can have some input to it, um, Mr. Delisle, Delisle, but yes, absolutely. But I, I bring it up because, you know, I, I get, you know, a lot of concerns, and, I mean, I, I speak on this because I'm hoping that I'm doing a decent job of, of, uh, um, interpreting the comments that I'm getting from people that live in a community, you know? They're like, you know, Robin, what's going on with these vacant houses? What is the Housing Economic Development Housing Inspections Department doing? It doesn't appear that they're forcing folks to comply with the laws and stuff, you know? So, you know, it's good to hear that you, you're thinking about it and you have a plan and there's legislation, you know, that's on the books to help you, and we look forward to, um, you know, getting some things underway and getting something out there for the public so that they can have confidence that we are doing something and that, um, you know, these things are going to get fixed, you know? Um, I'm fortunate that I don't have, I don't have a vacant house next door to my home, but there are people on my block that do, and I'm sure around the city, it's not fun when you got a, a, it's not a pleasant thing or experience if you got one of those homes next door to you, you know? So I just hope that you, we can get that, if you can get that proposal, was based on that land banking, uh, legislation to the council real quick, so we can share it with our constituents.
Councilwoman Delisle? Ms. Delisle?
Yes.
Um, yes, I had a question in reference to, um, the, the ordinance of the Adopt a Lot. So, and, um, on page two, number five, um, it says that the applicant must hold the city harmless and indemnify the city from liability for activities performed in connection with the program. And, and I don't know how realistic that is, and the reason that, that, uh, stuck out in my mind this evening was because in the, uh, in the petitions that we just, uh, went through this, this evening, the city is being held liable for the arts all night, uh, uh, affair that they had, and they were supposed to have their own insurance, and so you have here that the applicants must hold the city harmless. How much? How much of reality is that? Because if, if the city owns the property and anything happens on that property, the city is liable. So I just, you know, and I wanted to hear from Mr. Colosi on this, and I wanted somebody to be able to give me a, um, a more realistic answer, because I just don't believe that this can possibly be true if the city owns the property and they allow someone to adopt it, that the city can shun their responsibility if something goes wrong with this property based on that petition that I, you know, just went over this evening. So, Mr. Colosi, if you could speak to this, uh, ordinance on page two and number five.
I know you're looking for Mr. Colosi to to answer, um, but I I could offer that. I did speak with Mr. Morelli, who, um, reviewed this before he submitted it and with the city's risk, uh, assessor. And I, I'd be happy to have to provide something in writing, uh, that speaks to the question.
Yeah, I just, I'm just asking Mr. Colosi to provide me with some guidance here and, um, if I, if he could, uh, look into it. Mr. Colosi? Is he still on the line?
Don't see him. No, don't see him.
Is Ms. Samuel, is Ms. Samuel still on the line? Because I'll get with Mr. Colosi in the morning. Is Ms. Samuel still on the line?
Yes, Council President, I am still on the line.
Yes, um, can I, can I put clarity, uh, um, you know, they're going to have to do tonight, but I need to understand that if this ordinance goes forward, how much of the reality is that the city will not be held liable based on the fact that the city owns the property?
Mm-hmm. That's taken.
Um, I will, I will also have to look into that and I will provide the information to you and the council tomorrow.
Definitely, definitely. Alrighty, I appreciate that. Well, there's no more questions, Mr.?
Oh, yes, yes, Madam President, I have a little request to Mr. Delisle. It is ordinance, especially the part that, uh, suggests that those lots could be used for vegetable gardens, because I'm a garden. I have a, my yard is a garden. Uh, vegetables, that's all I, I don't have grass there, just vegetables. Uh, but I'm worried about a couple of things here. Uh, in page three, number two, the, the agreement is going to be for just one year. It will take a lot longer than one year to develop one of those abandoned lots into a, a vegetable garden. It takes, takes probably about a year or two years. You know, first year you start and then the second year you probably complete it, depending on the size of it. Also, some of our lots, I don't know, uh, they are contaminated by oil, by whatever other chemicals that were adjacent to corporations years ago, and they are contaminated. You, you have a person that works, uh, with that, uh, that program, you know, are those lots, are they going to be tested so that if I get one of those lots, I adopt, adopted, I'm going to have my garden so I can plant my tomatoes there and they'll be safe, uh, for me to eat them? You know, that I'm not go, I'm going to clean the lot, but then I'm going to be just cleaning all that pollution from the ground also, you know, and eating it. You know, that, that should be part of this, you know, it should be the brown first program to get involved in.
Should I, should I respond or is there someone else?
If you would like to.
Yeah, Councilman, I, I thank you for, for all those comments and I, and I appreciate them. I think this, the intent of this ordinance was for us to, to really just get started. Um, I think that a, a, a next step would be to establish, uh, community gardens that might be more long term, uh, permanent places or, um, that we might do that testing and have a longer term, uh, agreement. The idea for this was something to just stabilize, uh, lots, to, to get the program kind of started, um, without conveying any, uh, property rights, uh, or long term rights to someone. I think to, um, what Councilman Vaughn, uh, started to say about development and what future plans are, right now, a lot of things are, are in flux. This is to get us started. Um, we can certainly look to amend this as the program grows, um, or as the interest develops. Um, and I, and I think with, with land banking or something else, we could develop those, those programs, those policies where it's, um, uh, may, maybe it's you take care of it for a certain period of time and then you get ownership or it gets transferred. But we just are not at that point right now.
Council President?
Yes, go right ahead, Councilwoman.
Okay, Mr. Delisle, you know, my recommendation right now is, is to pull this until next month so that we can work on it, because I agree with Mr. Rodriguez. Um, if we're going to ask people to, um, install fences and only give them a year lease, I think we need to reconsider that length of time. That also gives the city a longer period of time to plan for development. But if anybody wants to grow any vegetables or anything like that, like he said, it's going to take a couple of seasons for them to be able to do that. So, and, and then the question that Ms. McBride had, so until we get these questions answered, I would suggest that you pull this in the meantime until we get this ironed out.
Well, if it's just the length of time, I, I mean, that you want to change it from one year to two year, that doesn't, uh, I don't know if that changes it all that much, um, in terms of the program. Uh, the, the legal question, we certainly can get, um, I think addressed between now and Thursday. Um, what was the, I'm sorry, Councilman, was there a?
The other one was that they had to pay to, they had to pay to install the fence themselves. And if they only have it for a year, they've put out money for a fence, this is no longer any good to them. Are we going to reimburse them for the fence if we decide we're going to develop it?
I, Councilwoman, that, that's just a, a function of, I guess, of funding, right? And identifying a funding source.
Okay, but I mean, we're putting out an ordinance, which is a law, which is stating they have to do that.
Mm-hmm. Although that, it's their option. They don't have to install the fence.
Look, Mr. Mr. Uh, uh, Director, what she's saying is that in, 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 in instances like this where it's not, um, urgent, that you can pull it, make the corrections and bring it back on the second of July, that's only two weeks, that's in less than two weeks from today.
Yeah. I mean, I would rather pull it than, than have this voted down. Because I'm very supportive of Adopt a Lot program. You know, this is vacant lots.
Mm-hmm. I, I can certainly agree with the, the idea of pulling it so it doesn't get shot down.
Okay, there you go.
And I didn't realize that that's where we're at, but that, that's fine. And I'm, and I'm, forgive my sense of urgency, I just know that we're going into summer schedule and then this is an ordinance and it's two readings, so we'll be, um, you know, be a further delay before it gets.
But, but, Mr. Mr. Delisle, we want to do this right.
Okay.
Okay.
Sure.
Council President?
So, um, Mr. Um, Mr. Berry, so we're going to pull this ordinance and we're going to get the, the legal answer, we're going to get the fencing answer, we're going to get the, the, the term limit answers, and then we'll bring this back on July the second. Um, and then that way, I, 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 I think the legal question is my, my, my concern, but, um, um, I appreciate you, Mr. Delisle, um, agreeing to go ahead and pull it, and then that way we can at least bring it back and it'll be a little, um, everything will be, um, most of the questions will be satisfied when you bring it back on the second of July.
Council President? Council President?
Yes, yes.
I have my, my question regarding this. Um, it says here, City of Trenton currently owns, maintains fifteen hundred vacant properties. How many private vacant properties do we have?
How many vacant properties?
Yeah, that are privately owned.
Oh, that are privately owned?
Yeah.
Oh, I, I.
All right, because my thing is, you know, the vacant property ordinance, can we increase that fee? Because right, right now, it's what, three thousand that ordinance that, when I recreated before, can we increase that fee, maybe to try to force more of these vacant properties to be sold? Do you understand what I'm saying? If we have thousands of them, or a thousand or whatever, can we, like you said, move it along, where you can get people, if they're vacant and they're falling down or boarded up, we want to move the city forward. So, like you said, if we could use some of them for lots, for gardens, but we've got other structures that we, you know, move forward.
The, you're saying increase the fees or increase the penalty for keeping it vacant?
Right, exactly.
To housing inspection process, I, I could certainly, certainly look at it. I mean, now that the fees increase for every year, um, that it, that it is, but we could look at adjusting that schedule. I, offhand, Councilman, I don't know if there's anything that precludes us from doing that, um, but we can, uh, certainly look into it.
Right, exactly, because that's, that's my take on this. The vacant properties, you're right, we have a lot in the city and, you know, like you said, some give us for gardens, but overall, we need to continue with the city forward. And that vacant property ordinance, I know before when I increased fee, I'm wondering if we can increase it more, because at the end of the day, we have to get these properties sold, because if not, they're going to be, in the, in future, it'll become our responsibility. You know what I mean? And we'll either have to pay money to knock them down, like you said. So if we, you know, give the nudge to people and say, look, these are your properties, do something with them, you know what I mean, or we're going to start making you pay more.
Council President? Council President?
Yes, go right ahead, Councilwoman.
Yeah, Mr. Delisle, now, this ordinance is just addressing vacant lots. It's not addressing vacant properties, building, structure.
Correct.
Okay. Because I was getting a little confused when everybody was talking about, um, vacant properties. This is just strictly vacant lots.
Correct.
Thank you.
Right, yeah, I, I understood that, but I'm just saying, the vacant properties is what I was concerned about. That's what I'm saying, the, the amount of money that, that we're charging now, if people are not addressing their issue, we should charge them more, like you said. And I agree with, with, uh, Councilman, uh, Rodriguez and Councilwoman Wilson about gardening, you're right. There's, we, together, this city, we've got to come together. And that's right. And that's what the people in the community want, soccer, gardens, whatever the people want, that's what we should be doing.
Still, I'm very.
Council President? Council President?
Yes, go right ahead.
I just have one quick question for, uh, Mr. Delisle and/or any of the attorneys that's on the line. I just want to be clear, the, it's a city code and, and state statute around, you know, vacant property or, whether it's as a house or any la, or land or lot. Isn't there legal, um, measures that the city can take in the event that an owner of property or land refuses to comply with developing their property? Can't the city move to put liens on them and, and force sale of that property so that it can be developed? I mean, I guess that goes back to what we're talking about with the land banking, um, Mr. Delisle, but we do have recourse in the city with homeowners or property owners who are not in compliance with keeping their property up to code. So I believe it's a year, right? Isn't that what the law says? A year you have from the time you purchase a property and it, to developing it? And then at that point, the city can, you know, enforce certain laws, right, and take the property, correct?
Um, a, and when you say a year, you, you mean from the time that you purchased it from the city?
No, like from the time, you know, uh, how the inspection goes out and says you're in violation. You take them to court, you give them an opportunity for due process, they've been through due process, they still haven't complied.
Because, woman, someone is interfering with the line and we shut them down.
What's her name again? Tell me, yeah.
Yes, yes.
I apologize, Councilwoman.
No, so I was just trying to get clarity on the, on the code, the city code and/or the state statute around, you know, um, landlords or property owners who aren't compliant with the municipal code as it relates to, uh, you know, developing your property and keeping it up to code. So, I mean, from the timeline, the, the judge tells them, you take them, the, the inspection department goes out, excuse me, the inspection department goes out, issue a summons, they go to court, the judge gives them opportunity to do the right thing, they refuse to do the right thing, the property still stays in the condition at its, it, and, you know, six months go past, a year goes past, at a certain point, I believe it's twelve months a year, from the time the court says, you know, enough already, um, that they have to, the, the city can move forward and put liens on it and take, confiscate the property, no?
There, there certainly are a number of remedies the city can employ, depending on the situation, whether it's, uh, a lot of these properties, uh, don't, people aren't paying taxes and we can, we do interim foreclosures to take the, the abandoned, the, the property, rather. Um, there's ones where we just can't find an owner, but the taxes are still getting paid, maybe through an estate. Um, there, there's, and there's all sorts of crazy cases. And then, yes, there are ones that even if the taxes are paid and it's still, um, is abandoned, if you will, that there, no work has been done, um, and, uh, it's vacant and it's, has the housing code violations, that the city can, uh, publish a list of abandoned properties and it can, um, take title and convey it to a developer, um, and then, you know, pay the, the owner basically what's the difference of the value and, and the rehab costs. So there are certainly a number of different avenues we can pursue.
Because I, I mean, um, yeah, I would definitely want to make those avenues public so people are aware and that these landlords, many who don't live here, are put on notice, you know, of sorts, that you can't hold a property in our city for a year, two years, and don't act on it, um, and make it, you know, a, a, um, if it continues to be eyesore, then yeah, I think the city should move aggressively to, to, to use, um, enforce all the laws it can to get that property compliant. Um, that's what we do as the redevelopment authority, right? When we assign developers to redevelopment property, we, 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 we draw up an agreement and they have to comply and they have to agree that they're going to build that property over a certain amount of period and sustain it in a way. Um, so why not the same laws apply to individual building, you know? I think that, that the code is there, I just need the city to enforce its laws and ordinances, you know? Okay, that's all I have, thanks.
The public hearing in second reading for the ordinance, uh, twenty dash forty-two will be held July second, twenty twenty. That ends.
That'll be the first, that'll be the first. We're not, we're, so he's going to blow it out. And we'll, we'll visit on the second of July.
Okay. That ends the, the portion of, uh, ordinances. Uh, before I ask for a motion to go into public comments, uh, on the docket items only, Mr. Thompson will remind the callers how to enter our meeting remotely.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Uh, again, this meeting is being recorded and for those who have joined the meeting using Microsoft Teams application, we we ask you to mute yourself by pressing the microphone icon. This will help reduce feedback and background noise. At the appropriate time, and if you would like to make a comment, please click the hand icon to be recognized. Once you are recognized, please click the microphone icon to speak. At the conclusion of your comment, please click the hand icon to lower it and click the microson- microphone icon to mute yourself. For those of you who have dialed into the meeting tonight, please press star six to mute yourself. When it is appropriate time to make comments, please unmute yourself by pressing star six. And when you have concluded your statement, press six, star six, to mute yourself. Again, we ask that you would be cordial and be a little patient as we will get to everyone, thank you.
Is there a motion to go into public?
So, move.
Second. Please state your name and address for the record. You will have up to ten minutes to speak.
This is on the docket items only, correct?
Yes.
Is there anyone out there that wants to speak on the docket?
So far, we, so far, we don't have anybody showing.
I'd like to make a motion to close. Public comment.
You didn't give people a chance cuz the hand icon is not showing.
Okay, so we'll, okay, so we'll give them a little bit more time. Are you a public speaker?
I would like to, but I'm not sure how to do it because there's no hands on the, online.
Announce yourself.
Yeah, just announce yourself. Say, state your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, my name is Algenon Ward. I live at six eighty-eight Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard in Trenton.
Go ahead.
Okay, um, this one on the procedural item. Um, you know you can, on this ordinance, you can pull those areas out of the bill that you want questions on and vote on the program because if it has to be two readings, it'll be September before you pass that. And those lots will have sat there all summer long, uh, uncleaned. So, if you don't move this thing along and then pass it on in, in the next couple of meetings, it's all gonna be rendered moot. You can amend this ordinance with those questions, you can pass the thing and amend it, uh, uh, later. But if you delay another month or two, it's gonna be too late for it to make a difference on the procedural issue. But the, um, changing completely to a different subject that's on the docket, I'm interested very much in where the Health Department is with the COVID nineteen testing plan for Trenton.
That's not on the docket.
Well, I apologize and I'll just leave it there.
Thank you.
I don't have a docket, so, there you go.
Anybody else?
No. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
We see no hands raised. Who was there?
Thank you, Mr. Ingram.
Is that Mr. Ingram?
Yes, we see it, now we have one, uh, Vansley. Yes, we see yours, Mr. Ingram. You may make comment, followed by, uh, Eugene Evangeline Ugori.
Thank you.
You have Evangeline.
Right, Miss Evangeline?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So, um, regarding the ordinance, uh, twenty two eighty, the proposed construction at the Lipinski, for the Lipinski Park, um, I was supportive of, uh, Councilwoman's, uh, point regarding the, uh, area in question. It's a small cornered property, uh, lot, um, that, uh, doesn't lend itself to the openness, uh, required for the addition, such as, um, Director Maria was, um, talking about. I know the area very well, it's been the subject of interest in the, um, ward and neighborhood. And, um, you know, all the comments that were made about it, uh, from Councilwoman, uh, Wilson to, uh, Council President McBride are well put. So, I, I think it, the feasibility of the addition of that, um, soccer pit or whatever they call it, uh, I don't think, uh, works well in terms of the logistics or transportation and parking. Um, that's what I wanted to, um, say about that particular, um, um, resolution. Now, um, on the resolution regarding the new news about the state suing the city regarding Trenton Water Works, uh, my question has to do with, uh, whatever happened to the process where public entities and/or officials are supposed to be notified ninety days before such lawsuits are initiated, let it blow, sir? Um, i- 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 how is it that this has become a past tense in terms of the initiation of the lawsuits and the, um, Trenton Water Works, uh, management and/or executives don't know anything about that? Did they receive any such notice and, you know, before we got to this point? I, I'm just wondering, you know, how we got to this point? Anyway, regarding the, um, uh, last, um, uh, resolutions, the one, the new ones under consideration for the adoption, land adoptions, I'm in support of the use of those. I'm in support of all the, uh, comments made regarding transition to ownership because it, it's not, um, profitable for people to consider investing into if it's going to be of a short duration. The city has retained on its responsibilities to take care of these lots. And yes, there are private individuals and I do support, uh, um, Councilman Harrison's, uh, suggestion about increasing the fees, uh, regarding these empty lots and, and the nature of them, uh, as Councilwoman, uh, one puts it, they're all eyesores, whether they are privately or publicly owned. And that's the extent of my comment for now.
Thank you. Is there anyone else with their hand up on the icon?
I don't see any.
I'd like to motion to close public comment.
Second.
On favor?
Second.
Moved by President McBride, second by Vice President, Paul Wilson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Civic comments?
Mr. Blakely, Councilman Blakely? Councilwoman Paul Wilson?
Yes, um, I just wanted to, um, first of all, I want to thank Mr. Smith for sending me an email and giving me an update on the lead service line replacement work that will continue in Mill Hill in several weeks. Um, I do appreciate your update and I've given it out to the community, so, thank you. And, um, I also want to dispel a myth because Mr. Blakely is constantly saying he got more votes than I did in the election. So, during the election, I had three opponents. Um, Mr. Blakely got eighteen point five five percent of the vote and I got forty-six point four zero percent of the vote in the first round. So, that would surely dispel that myth that he got more votes than me. And I want to thank everybody for participating tonight and I want to thank the directors for the work that you're doing. I know you're doing it in the best interest of the city, thank you.
Councilwoman Harrison?
Uh, I'd like to thank Wally, uh, who's out there working hard, uh, getting the streets paved, uh, with Director Smith, who's trying to work with the DEP, um, who's, uh, working with the DEP to try to get things done there. Um, also, uh, like to thank Maria Richardson. She's promoting the soccer, uh, moving the city forward. Ben Delisle, here with the adopt a lot, so if, uh, like you said, we could have gardening, but at the same time, we can increase the fees on these vacant properties. So, at the end of the day, it's, it's about moving the city forward and that's what I'm concerned about. Thank you so much.
Uh, Councilman Mucial?
Not did it this time, thank you.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Well, yes, uh, I, 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 I'm not gonna repeat what I said before when I asked my questions to the, uh, Water Works Director. Uh, the reason we did not vote for the eighty-three million dollars in bonds was because we had questions. We had a lot of questions for two years. We had been asking questions with no answers. They gave us, uh, they run around, they gave us a little answer here, a little answer there. We went through resolutions. One requesting that, uh, a financial report, quarterly financial reports to city council. We had another resolution requesting for a forensic audit. We were told that the past was the past. That's what the director said a couple of minutes ago. The past is the past, I wasn't there. No, there were questions. I voted no to those, I voted those, to those bonds because I had questions that were not answered. Questions on the reminder of those, uh, bonds, uh, resolutions from the past twelve, thirteen years. Lot of resolutions for repairs for this. Exactly with, the wording was exactly as the one, the one that I saw in this past two ordinances for, uh, for bonds, the same wording. Repairs to buildings, vehicles, this, that. Uh, the director just said, was said that some of the stuff was done, some of it were not done. I would still would like to see the answers, what was done and what wasn't done before I vote again for any other bond for Water Works. You know, that is, you know, as I said, it, you know, DEP could take us to court, you know, doesn't matter. Doesn't matter what the EP, uh, said, because DEP was the one that met with us about, it was, uh, about fourteen months ago. And they were the ones that told us about that ordinance for the reservoir cover. They said that Water Works didn't do anything about it. They were blaming Water Works at that time. You know, you know, I, I, why are they blaming council? And why is the mayor, instead of trying to answer to our questions, is blaming city council for everything that goes on in the city? You know, he should be trying to get us answers from Water Works. It's simple, go back, go back to the records. They have a financial officer, we agreed to that, uh, almost a year ago, so they could have somebody there working with their books and Water Works. So, why can't we get information from Water Works? You know, why can't the residents of, the residents of the county get information on, on what's going on inside of Water Works? Why not? What's the secret? You know? Give us the answers and you'll get your bonds. It's not a problem, but we want answer. I, at least, I am Santiago Rolles, Councilman Alar, and I want answers because I've been asking questions for the past two years. This is not new on the tattoo chair, on the, uh, Mr. Pico, on the, everybody I have been asking questions about that, about emergency con- emergency contracts on Water Works. There was another council, a councilwoman, that we were always asking questions about those, those contracts. You know, it's not a matter of trust, it's a matter of the money was issued, the bond ordinances were issued during the la- last fifteen years. Why the, uh, the repairs weren't done? I have no idea, they never answered, they never answered. Oh, that was the past, but no, no, that's not the past. This is serious, this is a serious matter. Those bonds, you know, somebody have to answer, we need answers on that, what happened with that money. If it wasn't used, why wasn't it used? Or what happened with the money? The director just said that there's ten million dollars left from the reservoir cover, from the, I believe they, uh, forty million dollars were issued about, about ten years ago. Uh, there's still supposedly ten million dollars left. I want to know if there is more money left, because if we have so much money left somewhere, why don't we use that money before we start issuing more bonds? You know, and that was, that's all I have to say, thank you very much.
Thank you, Council, Councilwoman, Paul.
Yes, thank you, Council President, and, uh, I concur, uh, with everything Councilman Rodriguez just stated about Trenton Water Works, and I don't wanna, you know, go through that, but I concur with every single point he's made. Um, and we all gonna have to work through it, uh, because we all know that Trenton Water Works is an asset to our community and we all want it to thrive and to be fiscally healthy and, of course, ultimately, always provide clean and quality water. And that's what we all want and, uh, we're gonna continue to make it happen. Um, the other thing that I wanted to just say, you know, a lot is going on in the community, um, and, uh, around, um, you know, uh, community policing, uh, police department reform, uh, criminal justice system reform. And, um, but, you know, I've been going to different forums. I, I've heard, uh, Attorney General Greer speak about it. I heard the, um, uh, many other mayors, uh, across our country talk about it. Um, the president, everybody. And, and I were able to, I was able to draw some common themes that I think all the leaders kind of agree with, that we cannot just police ourselves way, uh, way, uh, way out of it, um, or legislate our way out of it. Um, it is gonna have to be a holistic approach. And here in our city, we have a government and government is framed and designed at every level the same way, uh, with the same components, with the same processes. And I gotta believe that that's not, that's by, um, that's, uh, um, that has a purpose. And that purpose is, is that every single director here that runs a department in a municipality impacts the quality of life of that municipality. So, the Housing Director, the Housing Economic Development Director, the Parks and Recreation Director plays a role. Um, the Health Director, um, plays a role in the community in making it safe, making opportunity, giving people access, making it healthy. And I expect everybody here, and I hold everyone here in this meeting equally accountable, um, to make sure our residents are safe and have a quality of life here in the City of Trenton. Um, so, you know, I'm looking for Ben Delisle, Director Delisle, to come up with a comprehensive strategy to, uh, make our streets and our properties look, um, uh, you know, livable. Um, you know, we all know that neighborhoods that are torn down and, and vacant attracts crime and et cetera. So, um, and I'm looking for, uh, Director Abdul Ali to come up with a health, a comprehensive health plan, and I wanted her to speak on that as to where she is with, uh, executing on that resolution that one of our residents put forward. Um, the plan for, uh, a, uh, universal testing and contact tracing plan for COVID. And hopefully, I'll leave her a minute or two to speak to that. Um, but at the end of the day, I just want to make sure that, uh, every director is working with the, uh, police department, that you guys are collaborating, collaborating to get with each other like you should be. Um, you guys should not be, uh, it, it, you know, I, I, I'm supposed to be absolutely working across, I think Councilman Blakely discussed earlier, and I agree with him that, you know, uh, a council at large role is no more important than a individual who was elected to cover a ward. And, and I believe also that the directors that run a, a department in a municipality have to collaborate across, um, uh, cross functions. Um, uh, Director Abdul Ali and, uh, and was it, uh, Housing and Human Services? In human services, you have to work with the police department. I mean, you cannot not work with the police department. The police department cannot not work with you. Um, you have homelessness, you have, uh, drug, drug traffic and issues with that. Um, so I'm gonna be really looking and trying to work with the city and all my colleagues here to come up with a holistic strategy to move our city forward, to ensure that we're, um, developing programs and, and on the council, we're writing legislation and resolutions that help you all deliver services and programs for, for our residents. Uh, and, and we, as a city, will contribute to the general society and making it more safe and getting rid of and reforming, um, uh, police departments and law enforcement and the criminal justice system so that it creates equity and equality for everybody. Um, for Black, uh, Americans, for Latino Americans, for the LGBT community. Everybody should, uh, feel that their lives matter and that the law is, 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 they're treated the same in our system of laws. That the, that the laws, that the laws of our land is applied in equity and, and equal. So, um, we can get rid of these designations of Black lives and, and LGBT lives and, and Latino lives and all lives. And, uh, and that's what we all should be working for together and helping each other out to do it. We don't, we definitely have the resources and, uh, and we should look to, um, uh, to, to, to work together and get it done. So, um, Shakira Abdul Ali, can you just speak on where you are with that plan?
No, 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 no.
That's part of my question. That's part of my, it's my time.
Oh, okay.
Um, can you just speak to that, um, where you are with that plan for the universal testing and, uh, contact testing?
So, uh, Councilwoman, we are, um, the, the mayor put out a, a, uh, a, a program, uh, a report, I should say, on the activities that we have conducted around testing. In his report, he explained why it is not likely that we will ever be able to do universal testing. I mean, and when I say universal, I'm assuming you're talking about testing as many as, I don't know, sixty thousand people in the city. Uh, it's, it's, it is just beyond our capacity for cost. Uh, if you, if you look at the, the reality that each test runs about a hundred dollars. And even beyond that, even if somebody, if we tested today, who's to say that somebody wouldn't get, uh, get the, uh, the COVID next week? And so what, what are we really learning? We end up with, with, uh, with, uh, uh, negatives, negative results that may end up, uh, being meaningless. So we're probably not ever gonna be able to do universal testing. However, we will continue to do testing, and we're looking to do testing on demand. Meaning anybody who wants a test can, can go someplace in the city to do that. We don't have, um, the, the framework for that yet, but that's my understanding that we are, that we are moving towards that. Uh, we're, we're going to be working with, uh, Henry J. Austin to move in that direction.
Okay. Well, um, can you just do us a favor? Um, look at the resolution. Did you look at the resolution that our, our residents put forward? Did you read that resolution that the council subsequently passed?
I did.
And can you just get back to us at least, uh, in writing as to what is achievable there and what you're gonna take away from it and apply to the mayor's strategy?
Sure.
Yeah, that's all. And I, and I just want to say in closing that, um, I just want to see, we talk about investment in the water department a lot. And I really believe, and this is, if the mayor's office is on the line or his chief of staff in the B A, Mr. Cruz, we should really start talking about investment in other departments across the city. Um, departments like, uh, our solid waste and, and our solid waste department, uh, 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 the public works department, um, uh, programs and, and infrastructure that supports our parks. Our parks need a lot of investment as well. And all these processes, as I stated earlier, play a role in making our communities more viable and safer. So I believe that, um, uh, Department of Public Works need, we, I mean, I want to see some bonds put up to buy new equipment and garbage trucks and things like that for the public works department. I mean, I, I, I love the water department and, and we spend a lot of time on it, but we do have other critical processes and services in our city that requires attention as well. And I want to see some investments in those departments. Um, and, uh, and also in, uh, um, uh, particularly in our parks and recreation and, and the public works department. So that's the Council President, that's all I have today. And, uh, and I, I appreciate everyone's time and see you all next time.
All right, um, good evening, everyone, um, everyone that's on the line. I appreciate you all for coming out, um, this evening and taking your time to be a part of, uh, the council, uh, session. Um, I had a couple of questions that I wanted to ask, and they were both for, um, for Maria and, um, Director Maria and Director, uh, Delisle. And it's in reference to the community centers renovation. The renovations that were okay by HUD long before they unfroze the money. I have not heard or seen any movement. And we spoke the last time about how Jersey City was taking this opportunity to complete a lot of their projects that, um, they had already gotten okay to move forward on. And our community centers throughout Trenton had gotten okay from the, uh, Department of, uh, of Housing, the HUD, and our senior centers had gotten approval for renovations. But yet and still, I have not seen any work done to either community center or the seniors. So I just wanted to know where we are with that and why we haven't. And Mr. Delisle keeps holding up a piece of paper in reference to an R S P, but the R S Ps are never going forward. So I wanted to speak to that. And I also wanted to speak to the, um, the post-traumatic stress that has taken place in our community under the COVID nineteen and slash gun violence. I, I would like for, uh, Director Ali, just to give us an update on some of the things that are happening because remember we had a seven-year-old traumatized, a twelve-year-old, and this is constant in our community. And so now that we're reaching out to get our families the help that they need to be able to cope a little better, I would just like for, uh, Director, uh, Ali to share that, um, with the council and the public. But I also want to hear from, um, Director Richardson and Mr. Delisle about those renovations for the community centers and for the senior centers. Shakira, you're on, uh, I see your face, but you can move forward.
Yes, I see. I, I was, I was having trouble getting unmuted. Thank you so much, uh, Councilwoman McBride, for bringing this, um, bringing this, uh, to the attention of the other council members. Um, you and the mayor, uh, kind of got our ball rolling here. Um, we, before COVID set in, um, the, uh, uh, nursing super, the superintendent supervisor of nurses, uh, Micah, Micah Freeman and I had, uh, been working on putting together a mental health program. Uh, it was supposed to be a fair, um, but the COVID kind of interrupted it. But thankfully, well, necessarily, uh, we, um, had to, to pick this back up again and, um, address the trauma that is, that is throughout the city. I mean, you know, my, 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 uh, belief is that the entire city is traumatized. Every time anyone gets shot, the entire community in proximity to that event is traumatized, whether they recognize it themselves or not. So right now, what we're doing is working with, um, the most recent family members, uh, uh, whose, uh, families were impacted directly, uh, by gun violence. Um, and, uh, we're working with Oaks Integrated, with, uh, Catholic Charities, with Mill Hill, and with, uh, with other individual, um, uh, therapists of, of, uh, African descent. And we are, uh, working with those folks to get them into counseling. And we're looking for ways of spreading that opportunity throughout. We're, we're gonna work initially with about twenty families, but the intention is to create a process by which we can get that kind of counseling out to the entire community as needed. Um, it is, you know, it's my belief that, uh, unless people, uh, are, um, operating with, with optimal, optimal mental health, they, that nothing else we do is, is going to be effective. Uh, people can't work, people can't study, people can't, um, organize their lives, people can't make good decisions, uh, without good mental health. And so, um, I'm very, um, gratified that we are, uh, that we are going in this direction. Um, uh, the mayor and a few other members and I were on, uh, the, the, um, uh, the webinar today that the Attorney General, uh, is developing around, uh, responding to violence in the city. And so, uh, we're gonna use every resource at hand. So thank you.
Thank you. Um, Director, uh, Delisle, in reference to the community centers, R S Ps and senior centers?
Yes, the, um, they're, we're completing some environmental investigations, uh, for building hazards, principally asbestos, to put into the bid specifications. It was delayed with, with COVID, um, in getting the work performed. Um, that they've done their inspections, and we should, we're expecting those reports soon, and we can include the bid specifications. The construction plans have been reviewed by the building department. They've given their comments. We've adjusted the plans accordingly. So, um, we're actually finishing the, the bid specifications. We'll be able to issue those in the very near future.
I was hoping that you guys had taken this time, the COVID nineteen time, like, uh, they're doing up in New Jersey. We had spoke about that too, uh, Director Delisle, that they had taken this COVID, uh, downtime and when the seniors weren't in the centers and the children aren't in the community centers to actually, uh, do the renovation. And this is, this is like since March, and, um, we're still, you know, saying, you know, I think that we need to really, really move a little more aggressively to try to get some of that done. And, um, I, I thank you for, um, just sharing where we are. I just hope that you're able to give us an actual date that those R S Ps go out, okay? If that, if that can happen in the very near future, I'd appreciate it.
Yep, I can give you a schedule.
Alrighty. And, um, Mr., uh, Director Sawyer, did you want to, um, speak to, um, the COVID nineteen numbers and where we are with the numbers, uh, uh, this week?
Sure, Council President. How's everybody doing? So just today, we had, um, twenty-five out of twenty-nine tested in the east ward and thirty out of thirty-six tested in the west ward. Um, for the city of Trenton, we have three thousand five hundred and seven people under investigation with three thousand six hundred and forty-seven confirmed. And we have fifty-nine deaths at this time. In reference to the, the walk-up sites, the Trenton walk-up sites, we've tested about two hundred and sixty, I'm sorry, wrong. We tested three hundred and thirteen residents with a hundred and seventeen being positive. And when you look at the nursing home numbers, you're talking about two hundred and sixty residents that are confirmed positive and a hundred and fourteen deaths in the nursing homes. I'm sorry, sixty, sixty-five deaths in the nursing homes. So two hundred and sixty tests, tested or confirmed and sixty-five deaths in the nursing homes. Those are the numbers for the city of Trenton.
And there are the, and, and, and so out of that three thousand that you said are being investigated, um, when do those numbers come back to you?
So out of the three thou, what, you said, when do they come back?
No, I said, when do they come back? You said there are three thousand under.
Yeah, so they come back daily. So those, the investigated, I mean, they're, they're being tested. And as the test results come back, that's when we get notified of the positives. So that's your confirmed number. Three thousand six hundred and forty-seven have been confirmed positive.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
If the, um, police director wants, um, to give the public an update on anything that is taking place in reference to the violence in the community, we would like to speak to that, uh, Director Coley.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman, um, I was having a hard time unmuting myself. Could you repeat your question, please?
Yes, I said, did you want to speak to the public in reference to the gun violence in our community and some of the things that we're doing to, um, to secure and, um, the safety of our, our residents?
Oh, absolutely. So one of the things, um, that we're doing is something that I've been talking about, um, for quite some time now, collaborating with, um, our federal, it, our federal state and county partners. And as you can see, they made, um, a major takedown in the city for, um, some of the major players that were in the city that were contributing a lot to the, um, violence that we were having. Um, now, that's not the end all to be, although they made a major dent. There's another group of, um, individuals that we're looking at. Um, I don't want to say much more than that, um, that we're also looking to take down in the very near future. Unfortunately, when we're building, um, and collaborating, it's not as quick um, as we would like sometimes on a municipal level. But, um, the, the charges seem to stick better and the, um, terms are a lot longer, taking the, um, violent offenders out of our neighborhoods a lot longer. So we're doing that. Um, we have reorg, um, reorganized the, um, police department to try to have a lot more coverage in our problematic, um, areas. And as the city is, um, constantly lifting restrictions, you know, along with the state, we're trying to make sure that we're going to, um, have coverage in area where our kids are playing so that they can play and be safe. Um, we're encouraging our officers to be a lot more friendly and approachable when it comes to, um, our youth. And just to understand that this is a troubling time that we're all in, is, um, President. And, um, I spoke about, I think the difference in this time is that even police officers are speaking out now and saying, what happened to George Floyd was absolutely wrong. We don't want that to happen in our city, and the only way for that not to happen in our city is if we build partnerships with, um, community members, leaders. I am so looking. I am so looking forward to, um, having a town hall meeting um, so that the residents can ask questions. I can give them, um, whatever answers they can look for. Whether it be, um, popular answers or not, I'm always going to give them the truth as it stands, um, with the, um, police department. So we are doing some things to try and wrap our arms around the crime, keep them wrapped and, um, continue to work with, um, our county, state and our federal partners. There have been, um, nine of the cases from the, um, looting incident has now been taken over by our federal partners. Uh, we're still looking, I know some of, um, merchants think that we're not moving as quickly as we should to make additional arrests, um, in terms of the looting. We have been identifying individuals. Charges are still being preferred against those people. Every single person that we can identify that was involved in that whole looting situation will have, will face charges. And the ones that we can't identify, I believe, uh, don't hold me to it. We had a conversation last Thursday with our intelligence unit. They were supposed to, um, have pictures posted of the people that we were unable to identify to ask for the, um, public's assistance. So open police department, we have a lot of balls in the air and we're trying to keep them in the air and keep the city safe as possible and try to prevent, um, you know, anything that happened with, uh, Mr. Floyd's situation from happening in Trenton. But the residents should be confident that if anything like that should happen, that I absolutely have no, um, qualms about taking that officer off the street, uh, making recommendations for termination, because that's not what we want in our city and that's not who we want policing our city. Thank you.
Thank you. And tonight, um, the, 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 the one question that, um, uh, Councilwoman Vaughn was on the call today with the, um, Attorney General. And he said that there was funding for the Trenton Police Department. Um, and, um, as far as, uh, recreation, recreational activities for the police in the community, um, is, um, do your, um, department know about that funding? And have you guys went after any of those funds?
Okay, so I, I was on that, that call partially as well. I was partially in a meeting with the, um, Chief of Staff and the other part, I was, um, on the call. I am aware of those funds and I have spoken with, um, Sergeant Durlacher to, um, apply for them. I know she has applied for some grant funding. Um, and we have received that, but that's something I think we can talk about at a different time. And we are definitely going to go after the, um, recreational funding. Once I get, um, more information about that, I will sit down with, um, Director Richardson and see how we can collaborate on, um, how to best utilize that.
I, I appreciate each and every one of you this evening. And I appreciate, um, the, the public for tuning. And I would like to take this opportunity to thank you all again. And, um, we can, um, make a motion to it during this meeting.
Is there a motion? Second?
Second.
All in favor? Close. Good night.